Atkin.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember West.
Here.
Vice Mayor Asher.
Here.
And Mayor Brinkman.
I am here. And can we stand, but before we stand, hang on Bob for a second. I like to have a stand and just a minute of thought, prayer for all the lost people in Newtown, Connecticut, and thank you very much. Bob, you want to start?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, public comment.
Hello. I would like to, and I know I've asked this a couple of times before, but why can't the city of Emeryville accept a debit card or a credit card? You know, every other government agency charges you a convenience fee, it covers the cost of the handling, but not in Emeryville you can't use a debit card or a credit card. And it just doesn't make any sense why you wouldn't want to be more inclined to collect money.
Thank you. Scott, thank you.
A couple of things. I noticed on administrative items tonight, there are a couple of pedestrian paths that are not happening. I'm saddened as a member of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, but I just hope going forward that we can make one of the paths that goes from Doyle Street through to 53rd really happen in my lifetime. The other thing is that I'm pleasantly surprised at a renewed effort for family-friendly housing. And I want to particularly thank Councilmember Ruth Atkin for her speech about that at the last meeting, even though I wasn't here, I heard about it. And I'm pleasantly surprised at our city taking a very forward-thinking direction for our town.
Thank you very much, Scott. Is there anybody else? Andre, please come up.
I don't know if we have had a minute of silence for the victim of our case, but if we didn't, I think it's the time to do it. And I'm really sorry about all this tragedy. It really affects me because it looked like that during my lifetime, I have lived many of those. I was a kid during World War II, and I saw our soldiers being killed. And then several weeks later, I learned that four of my cousins had perished in a church in the bombing of Dresden. And then we also find out that when the bombing of Dresden happened, the hostility was over, so it was a necessary bombing. But there was more than that. More recently, what did shock me the most was that this state here still voted to have the capital punishment. There is a real phobia about killing, and it doesn't matter if those insane do it on the spur of what their rationale is. But when people will sit on a bench and decide to kill somebody, I think it's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts. Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Move the consent calendar.
Clear a second.
Second.
Could I just, oh, we're on the blue agenda. Sorry.
Okay, moving on down to administrative items.
It's Davis and Atkin, five oh.
And I think this is Deborah. And how are you?
Thank you, Mayor Brinkman, and members of the City Council and members of the public. Tonight I'm going to do a brief presentation about the successor agency's recent due diligence review. Previously, we had a housing due diligence review, and you received that report. This report is a little more significant, so I'd like to go over the details with you. I'm not sure if you received a copy of it, so I'd like to pass out a hard copy for you.
We did.
I have that.
Yeah, I do too.
It's in our packet electronically.
So this report was put together by a CPA firm that is the city's financial auditor, Lanshall &amp; Lunhard. It was dated December 13th. It was delivered on December 14th in time for the December 15th deadline that was set by the Department of Finance. The requirements of AB 1484, which is the dissolution, redevelopment dissolution law, requires that we complete a due diligence review. First, we did it on the housing funds. This is for the non-housing funds. The Oversight Board this evening held their public comments session, which was required five days prior to them approving it. They're set to approve the due diligence review on January 8th. So here tonight, this is just an information item for you. You are not required to take any action. So as a result of the AB 1484 law, the Department of Finance put together some detailed procedures. Those are included at the beginning of the report. And the results of those procedures is that the successor agency is required to list the assets of the agency of these specific funds as of June 30th. And then there are certain things you get to subtract out, and the successor agency is able to hold those assets for future obligations and payments. And then the remainder is supposed to be submitted to the county auditor controller to be distributed to the taxing agencies of the jurisdiction. So the results of our report is that we started with assets of $155.9 million. We've subtracted out certain items, which I'll go through the details of, and we are left with a report that suggests that we distribute $33 million to the taxing agencies, which the city is one of those taxing agencies, and I believe we receive about 22%. So here are the assets, just to summary briefly of the assets, they're included in your packet. This is called Procedure Five. There are a few other procedures that I'm not going to go over the details of, but I'll be happy to answer questions on. Cash and investments of $79.8 million. Cash that's held by a trustee for bond reserves of $11.1 million. We had a small amount of accounts receivable and prepaid expenses. $23.6 million of loans and notes receivable that are not related to housing. We have land held for resale of $21.5 million in capital assets of about $16 million. And those are the assets as of June 30th, adding up to 151. These are the items that we've stated are restricted cash, restricted, basically restricted cash amounts. The 11.1 for bond reserves. There's also bond proceeds that the law says that you are allowed to hold, and then if you receive your notice of completion sometime after April, then you would be eligible to use those for redevelopment-type projects. We have about 24 million, over $24 million of that, so we're setting that aside. Part of it's in cash, part of it's in investments. And then there are some deposits that we're holding for different agreements that we have. That adds up to $35.8 million. Also, there are non-liquid assets that we are holding. Those are the loans and notes receivable of 23.5. The prepaid expenses, land held for resale, and capital assets. If you look at your report, it does detail out the details of that, that you can refer to, and if you have any questions. Some of it is in Procedure Five on page 12, and then also on page 14 and 15, it lists out the different properties and the different loan agreements that we are, that we're holding. So those amounts, we've also suggested, should not be distributed. We need to hold on to those. And then there is a section where we list our approved obligations, our enforceable obligations as approved by the Department of Finance, our ROPS amounts. And so as of June 30th, we're suggesting that there's $22 million from ROPS One that is still outstanding. So we need to keep that money so that we can make, pay these obligations that are approved by the Department of Finance. And they're broken down generally into these different categories, some contracts for services, Site B-related costs, which are mostly remediation, Emery Station Greenway, another Greenway, the Corporation Yard remediation, and some other agreements for $22 million. So those are the details of this, this final summary. This is the same slide that I showed you before, breaking down the total assets minus the obligations that we're going to keep for $33 million. So if you have any questions on the numbers, I can answer that now, and then I'll just go brief, quickly through the next steps that we have to take.
Any questions? Why don't you just proceed?
I just have one other question, which is, you talked about the non-liquid assets, and if those were at some point liquidated, sold, the proceeds from that would similarly be distributed to taxing entities, or how would, how would that be handled?
That is my understanding.
Okay. But it's not clarified in this process?
There's a, I think Mr. Biddle can refer to the annual audit process that they're going to go through.
Well, to the extent we are talking about real property assets that would be subject to the long-range property management plan, and to the extent properties are retained by the city for future development, the code sections dealing with that can be read such that any sales proceeds, because the long-range property management plan, once it's approved, property that's retained for future development is then transferred to the city. And the way the code reads, it can be interpreted that the city would then retain the proceeds from any sale of those properties.
Okay, thank you. I remember that now.
I have a quick question. I'm a little unclear about what are debt services for paying the bonds. Could you just kind of run through that again, where that's reflected?
Yes, the redevelopment agency has issued several bonds over the years, and so there is a bond reserve that is required by every single issue, and that is set aside with the Bank of New York.
Is that the 35.7 there?
No, that's the 11 million right here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the 11 million. And so those are the reserves. And then there are annual interest, semi-annual interest payments and annual principal payments that we're making on all these bonds. And the bondholders are very concerned that we're going to make these payments, and the law states that the trust fund money that we list on the ROPS every six months is there to fund this, because those bonds were issued with a promise that tax increment would pay for them. So those should be secured.
Right, thank you.
Okay.
So, I mean, I just wanted to mention that this is part of the redevelopment law that's gone into place by Governor Brown, and the city has done a fantastic job of creating economic development that it created tax increment in order to further provide financing for projects in the city. So it's a little bit difficult to fathom that we're sending off $33 million, but it shows the activity and the success that the agency had while it was there. So the next steps are that the Oversight Board will review, make adjustments, and vote to approve and transmit this due diligence review at their January 8th regular meeting. We will send that to the Department of Finance by the January 15th deadline and all the other parties. The Department of Finance will make a, send us a letter of findings and determinations no later than April 1st. We do expect that they will make adjustments, they did in the housing, in the housing due diligence. And therefore, we have the opportunity to request a meet-and-confer where we go to Sacramento and we sit down with them, and they explain to them more details about, about our situation. And then they are supposed to make a final determination after that. If we do not request a meet-and-confer, we're required to submit the, the money within five days. If we do request a meet-and-confer, which is likely, then we would submit the funds after the meet-and-confer process is, is complete, and that would be the $33 million. So later on our agenda, we have a discussion about the housing due diligence review, and we'll give you an update on that after this. But that concludes my report.
Okay. I guess you're staying there for 4.2, and Mr. Biddle is probably going to be joining?
Mayor, I have a question for you, Deborah. Is there, you know, we seem to be moving along quite well up till April 5th, but then it appears to be open-ended for, what is the deadline for the state, the final final, when they have to get back and make a determination? April Fool's Day was supposedly the final final, then we have till April 5th, but then, then what's going to take place?
Yeah, I think in general...
Well, they, if there's a request to meet-and-confer, because we're disputing what their determination, their final determination on our non-housing fund, and so if there's a meet-and-confer, they will then schedule that meet-and-confer sometime, would likely occur, I would say probably by the, before the end of April, maybe early May, we go and meet. There really is no hard and fast deadline set forth in this statute.
That's what I was trying to get at, Michael. It's still open-ended.
But that said, they do have an incentive, the, the state does, to come to a conclusion on that quickly, because they want to see the money, we're talking $33 million here, they want to see that money returned, you know, across the state from successor agencies to the Alameda, or to the respective auditor controllers, so that it then gets dispersed out to the taxing entity. So, you know, I think they do have an incentive to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
4.2.
Do 4.2.
Results of the ROPS number three.
Oh, did you bring that? Oh, I don't have any PowerPoint of any sort, but this is just an update real quick, as quick as I can be, on the, so we had a ROPS Three Recognize Obligation Payment Schedule Three that the successor agency approved, I want to say back in October, if I'm not mistaken, and was submitted to the Oversight Board, which approved it, and that was sent up to the state. The state undertook a review, and they denied certain items that were listed on ROPS Three. The staff requested a, a meet-and-confer on ROPS Three. We attended a meeting up in Sacramento in November. The, there were sort of three general items that, that the meet-and-confer was about. One related to sort of service contracts primarily for maintenance-related items for some of the real property assets. The second related to utilization of the pre-2011 excess bond proceeds. You recall that we had an item on ROPS Three where we designated 21.2 million of the unexpended bonds for the ECL project, and the balance of about three and a half million for a combination of either the Art Center, the Bridge, and the Transit Center. So the Department of Finance had objected to placement of those items on the ROPS because we have not yet received our finding of completion. So that was another item they objected to. And then the, the third item related to future debt obligations for the acquisition of 5890 5900 Christie Avenue. So we went up, myself, City Manager, Deborah Auker, as well as the School District Superintendent, met with the Department of Finance staff in, I believe it was November 9th, and we met, and we were supposed to have received a determination from the Department of Finance by December 15th, which was Saturday. We have not heard anything back, so that's the status. The other item was the Low and Moderate Income Housing Due Diligence Review that was performed on the Low Mod Housing Fund. You'll recall that initially, that review that was approved by the successor agency, or rather by the Oversight Board, indicated that of the funds on deposit with the Low Mod Income Housing Fund, that roughly $608,000 needed to be transmitted to the county. So we submitted the, the review to Department of Finance. They initially came back to us and said, "We've reviewed it, and we believe you should be repaying, or paying over to us essentially about 7.2 million." And they were, and so we, of course, requested to meet-and-confer. We did receive a, a letter from the Department of Finance with their determination as a result of the meet-and-confer process. That letter was provided on Saturday, December 15th, I believe. Ms. Auker provided you a copy. And the, let me just, initially, of the seven, roughly $7 million that they were saying we needed to repay, initially 2.8 million of it was related to the acquisition of 5890 5900 Christie Avenue. They were reviewing a resolution that the redevelopment agency had adopted when it authorized the acquisition of that property. That same resolution essentially provided for a transfer of 2.8 million from one fund to the other, to essentially put the money in their correct fund to, to allow for the acquisition. However, what they didn't read further was that the appropriation that was made for the acquisition was only for 1.5 million, and that was consistent with the purchase and sale agreement. We paid 1.5 at close, and the balance of the purchase price is in a note. So we were able to explain to them that it wasn't, to the extent they were denying it, or it should not be 2.8 million, it should be 1.5. Their final determination, they agreed with us, so they've reduced that. Likewise, they denied 3.1 million relating to the owner-participation agreement between the redevelopment agency and, and the Rockwood Christie for the development of the housing that's underway there at 64th and Christie. That was based essentially on a misunderstanding. We had listed the obligation on, on the ROPS as being funded with, with bond proceeds, and, and then it was paid for with bond proceeds out of the Low and Moderate Income Housing Fund. So they were saying, "Well, you, you know, you mis-categorize it, so we're denying it." And so we, we explained to them, "Listen, it's, you know, enforceable obligation, it was paid for with bond proceeds, but it was housing bond proceeds." So they reversed themselves on that. They also initially denied $445,000 related to this trust fund that was established. And again, it's not from any tax increment money, but it's monies that are paid for into a fund by Cattellus Development related to the Bridge Court Apartments on 40th Street. So this was a, an agreement between the redevelopment agency and Bridge Court whereby they have to deposit, create a fund essentially of about 1.4 million that will help fund the, or assist, I should say, with, in the event that those rental units are converted and sold for, for sale housing, that, that pot of money will assist those that are in the affordable units, currently help them with that transition to a for-sale, or from a rental to a for-sale project. So they backed off on that and likewise recognized that obligation. And then finally, there was adjustments of an additional $617,000 for monies that were set aside for future enforceable obligations that essentially will have to pay these obligations in the future, but they're not essentially due right now. So the Department of Finance essentially is saying, "We don't want you holding on to this, this stash of cash. If you, you know, if you need it during this, this time period, fine, but you don't need it now, you need it in the future. You'll get future property tax trust fund money for those obligations, so you don't need that 617,000 in your account. Give it over to us and, and..." To the taxing entities. So the, the bottom line was, is that they came out and said that we need to pay over 2.7 million. The, the one item, so we've, just for your information, we will be asking the City Council as the housing successor to add an item to your agenda later this evening to consider an inter-fund loan between the, from the city's general fund to the, to the city's housing asset fund to essentially repay for the housing, the city housing successor to repay the, the down payment that was made for the 5890 5900 Christie Avenue. That, then, those funds would be refunded by the city housing successor to the successor agency to then allow the successor agency to pay this $2.7 million amount that's due as part of the Low Mod Income Housing Fund Due Diligence Review. Making the payment on that due diligence review is, is a requirement, one of the requirements in order for the successor agency to receive its finding of completion sometime next, next summer. Once you get your finding of completion, you'll be able to utilize your roughly 24.5 million bonds, excess bond proceeds, as well as retain some of your, your real property assets for, for governmental use. So we have various properties that we acquired for parks, the Art Center behind you, and then likewise, there's properties that we would like to retain for, for development, and that's the South Bayfront Site B. And then there's also the, the Shawmount Lot, we call it, that little small rectangular parcel just south of Marriott. So we get our finding completion, then we'll be able to use those bond proceeds and, and utilize those properties. So when we get to that item later tonight, we'll get into that a little bit further. So that's the due diligence review.
Any questions? Seeing none, I guess...
I'd just like to make a comment. That's good work.
That's very good.
This is a tough fight against the state.
I do have a question. Mike, before you leave.
Yes.
In terms, I happen to be at an event where I overheard our Assembly Member talking to one of our school board members about the ECL funding.
Yes.
And so there was something that Department of Finance rejected, but that she helped us retain for, that was, can you explain what, Nicola's nodding, I guess you know what I'm talking about.
Yes, I do.
Can you explain what that is?
And that, that's, that's one of the items on ROPS Three, and that, so there were, there were two, there are items 84 and 85 on ROPS Three. They, we listed, 84 showed the ability to use the pre-2011 excess bond proceeds, 21.2 million for the ECL project. And line 85 took the balance of those bond proceeds, about three and a half, and we designated it for the other three projects, the pedestrian bridge, the art center, and transit center. So the Department of Finance, they denied those, those two items, and they're, the reason for doing so was because, they said, "You, you will be able to utilize your, your bond proceeds once you obtain your finding of completion, but you haven't received your finding of completion yet, so it's premature to list those items on the, on ROPS Three." So we requested a meet-and-confer on various items, including those. We asked that if they wanted to further condition the, the placement of, the listing of those items on, on ROPS Three, please do so, because we had already, we, we pointed out to them that in a footnote for those two items, we, we identified and acknowledged that our ability to utilize those funds was conditioned on absolutely, on condition, excuse me, on obtaining the finding of completion. So we understood their position, and we said nevertheless, we would like to be able to keep those items on there. They would provide a measure of security comfort, however you want to call it, to, to the city. the city and the school district.
Did our assembly member intervene somehow?
Our assembly, yes, we contacted our lobbyist and who's been in touch with our assembly member. And we're waiting for, I know we've had, we understand that we've had some indications from the Department of Finance that they're going to allow those two items to remain, or at least the one related to the ECL remain. But again, we have, as I indicated earlier, we have not received a final letter of determination from the Department of Finance on ROPS three. So whether they do or do not, we don't know, but the last indication that I received via Nicolo.
He's right behind you.
Was that they were going to sort of work with us on that, so.
Absolutely. Mayor and council members, the city attorney said a very, very good description of what happened. Once the city came up to do the meet and confer, we met with them, and they gave me a rundown of what happened. And then so ran over to the Capitol, met with the assembly member's chief of staff, and then the senator's chief of staff also to explain what's going on, what the request is. And so the assembly member's been very helpful working with Department of Finance, as is her chief of staff, Diane Griffiths. And so via email, she gave me the heads up, "Hey, spoke to Department of Finance, they want to put that specific line item that, yes, you can use the bond proceeds for the ECL project. They're going to put it in your final letter." I've heard that there's like two hundred and forty-seven appeals for the ROPS three, and so Department of Finance is trying to crank out those letters as best as they can. So I had, you know, a confirmation that they said this is going to happen. I understand where the city attorney's coming from. Once we get it in writing, I think we'll all kind of exhale a bit. But yet they have been very helpful to summarize your question.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Moving on down to, is there any other questions?
Mayor, I think there's some.
Oh, okay.
Just one thing I wanted to get clarification on. On attachment B seven, it talks about outstanding loans, and then it lists Bay Street Partners and says eighteen million, principal outstanding minus amount forgiven. So I just was curious about that.
That is, so that relates to the Bay Street project, the agreement that the redevelopment agency had struck with Bay Street Partners back in early two thousand for the sale of Site A, what we consider Site A. So we sold the property for about twenty-five million, and they paid initially, I think there was a down payment of about five million or so, and they, there was a note back in favor of the redevelopment agency for about roughly twenty million. And so since that time, there have been payments made on the note. There have also pursuant to the terms of the note, they were entitled to a credit against the principal for costs that they incurred in excess of certain amounts for hazardous waste cleanup activities that weren't covered by some of their insurance, as well as for costs that they incurred related to mitigation of some of the archaeological resources on the site. So that's what that loan amount relates to.
Oh, thank you, Ken. Okay, moving on to status report on Oversight Board legal expenditures.
So you have in your packet the latest report on expenditures for the prior month of approximately fourteen thousand dollars. That was primarily related to the review of the due diligence report. So you also have a summary table that shows that we're still within budget for the year. We had budgeted about twenty thousand dollars a month, so this expenditure amount was within that amount, and your overall budget is still in track, on track.
Okay, any questions? And Jennifer, do you have something to add for?
Yeah, so for item six, today, the Oversight Board had a meeting before the city council meeting. It was, the purpose was to hear public comment on the due diligence review that we just heard our presentation on. And we will move, as we already heard, on January eighth on that with action. Similarly, we adopted our calendar for the two thousand thirteen year, and we heard similar update on the meet and confer process as well. And I'll just close by saying I'm, as we're seeing later on this agenda, I'm no longer going to be serving on the Oversight Board, so this is my last report.
You will be missed. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We will now open up the Emeryville City Council regular meeting. And we've done our roll call, pledge of allegiance, so special orders of the day. Chief, you're up.
Mayor Brinkman, members of council, it's a sad time for us right now in the Emeryville Police Department. We worked very hard to get our volunteer program going as well as we can, and now we're losing one of its members, actually the very first member to step up. And so tonight, we'd like to, from the police department, from the council, recognize Pat McGovern for her unselfish volunteer work with the department. Although short-lived, she had a major impact with the department. She jumped in and handled any task we asked her, and one of those tasks was to aid in our property room purge, which is no small task to begin with. She jumped in and helped as best as anyone could, and we really appreciate it. So tonight, before you, there's a resolution, and I'd like to read the resolution, if I may.
Please.
Resolution of the city council, the city of Emeryville acknowledging Pat McGovern for her service as the Emeryville Police Department's first volunteer. Whereas Pat McGovern, a resident of the city of Emeryville, is the Emeryville Police Department's first volunteer, beginning her service in July fourth, two thousand and twelve, where she took on mighty crowds at Powell and Frontage and directed them safely across the street. Whereas Pat distinguished herself for the services she provided to the department and the citizens of Emeryville, and whereas Pat was willing to tackle any tasks needed to advance the vision of the police department, and whereas Pat had to resign her volunteer position for personal reasons beyond control now that therefore be it resolved that the mayor, city council, city manager, and the members of the Emeryville Police Department do hereby commend and express appreciation to Pat McGovern for her dedicated and distinguished service to the citizens of Emeryville. We also have a plaque with a certificate of appreciation that reads, "Emeryville Police Department presents this certificate in recognition of invaluable volunteer service and commitment to the community of Emeryville to Pat McGovern."
Thank you very much, Pat.
And on the behalf of Emeryville Police Officers Association, officers, we wanted to thank you for your support and service to police officers and for the city of Emeryville. Presenting with this.
I'd just like to say thank you, everybody. It's, I've been here for thirty years at Watergate, and it's been a real pleasure serving the police department. I also am a threat person for the fire department, and I really wanted to give more time to both, but for personal reasons, I have to, I'm moving to Naples, Florida, so don't feel sorry for me. It's two degrees back there.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much for your time.
Comment?
Yes, comment.
Yeah, so Pat, as you leave, I just want to commend you for taking that plunge of being among the first to go through this. This was a program that I kind of nudged the police department to do, and just in hearing the quick report tonight, I can see how valuable it was, and I think it's great in terms of having the police department interacting more with the public. And you were introduced to me Fourth of July really fast as I was on my bike, you know, going by.
That's right, I remember that.
Yeah, but, so I just wanted to thank you, because sometimes when people start off in a program that's new, you know, there could be, there needs to be momentum, and there could be glitches, and just, I just want to thank you for your service to the community very much.
Thank you. And you don't have to leave with a flower, you can stay for the rest of the meeting.
And I want to recognize not only Pat McGovern, but also Councilmember Akin for actually helping with the impetus of getting this going, because it's really, it's a service to our community. Appreciate it.
So thank you both. Okay, public comments.
Public comments about that item?
Well, just open any public comment, Brian. Would you like to talk about that item? No, okay, come on up.
Okay, a couple of meetings ago, Jeff Sears from Wareham Development spoke with you, and he told the five of you, plus everybody in Emeryville, that there's a problem with the engineered cap and the slurry wall designed by the state of California to contain the toxins in the mound site, which is where Wareham wants to build the transit center project. Mr. Sears told us that it's a toxic soup underneath the engineered cap, but he said that the engineered cap, he said it implied that it's failing, because he said that the toxins are quote bubbling up, is what he told us. So I, he seems to be a man of his word. I think we should take that at face value, and we, there's a lot of, there's heavy metals there, we know that, there's volatile organic compounds there. There are PCBs, which are highly carcinogenic. If Mr. Sears is correct, this is a major health hazard that we need to take care of immediately. So we need to find out what precisely Mr. Sears is talking about when he says the toxins are bubbling up and the engineer, we're in danger, basically. Engineered cap is failing. This thing was set up for, basically for eternity, or for many generations, and it's very disturbing to me to hear that this engineered cap done by the state of California is failing. So I think it's incumbent upon the five of you to find out immediately what Mr. Sears was referring to when he said that the toxins are bubbling up and that there's a danger there. So I think you should take care of that. You should find out what he's talking about and fix the problem if there is a problem. Thanks.
Thank you for the comment, Brian. Anybody else? Yes, please. And you are?
Hi, my name is Kristina Hanks, and I'm a business owner in Emeryville. I own East Bay Pilates at fifteen twenty-two Park Avenue. And I'm not sure if this was the meeting or not, but I am just coming to ask about the possibility of getting more two-hour parking or any kind of parking on Park Avenue. I know that that was an agenda, and I don't know if this was the time.
I believe it's on here.
It is. Just to say, as a small business owner, we've been in business since two thousand and five, and our business operates with hourly clients, meaning they come on the hour and they leave on the hour. And since it has become a lot of more apartments around here, and there are cars right in front of our business that park there for weeks on end, that we would really appreciate. And I know that the hair salon shed also feels the same, that anything that can be done to keep it moving, keep a flow, that, because when the cars are there for a long time, it really makes it hard if someone has an appointment to get in on time sometimes. A lot of people have been parking as far down as Pixar to walk down to our studio. So I'm just making that special request. We really appreciate that you take that into consideration.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Please come up.
I have a comment, I'm here.
And you are?
Yeah, I'm sorry. My name is Sasha, the last name is Shamsat. I'm a property owner in this town, Peabody Lane in specific, which is a related item eight one.
Yeah, eight, yeah, I have your.
Well, I'm here, basically, I'm in a major dilemma. The city, the zoning and public work, the last five years, haven't received any cooperation about the condition of Peabody Lane, which is a major eyesore. And I offered the strip to the city. I talked to Mr. Kaufman, I said, "Mr. Kaufman, this is yours because it involves public safety, fire zone, and in case if there's a problem in that lane, there's no way fire marshal can get in there." And of course, he said it wasn't up to him to decide that. And taking the opportunity again, I'm offering you the Peabody Lane, you can have it.
A gift?
I am very serious, as a gift, as a Christmas gift. And, but if you, if you don't accept it, I need the cooperation to make the area better. I'm willing to work on it, I've already started a project. I'm getting zero cooperation from the neighbors, the police department, fire, is a fire lane, so we're calling people, park over there, but they shouldn't park over there. And the police department is, so this is a public, is a private property, and they have no jurisdiction to get in there. And the condition that I have with my neighbor is storing enormous amount of combustible stuff. We don't know what's in there, whether it's toxic or not, but we can't see it, so therefore causing potential problem. If there's a fire, which one of these, as it has to happen, if he doesn't remove it, then I'll be liable, and then you'll be liable, because the code violations are enormous from all departments, from zoning to public works, to building, to fire, to police, and so forth. So I'm here basically pleading and ask for help, and take the property or help me to fix it so we can do something.
We will be talking more on that item a little bit later, so. But I appreciate those comments.
Thank you.
Did we get some contact information?
We've got it.
I have it.
You have some cards you could give to the city attorney and the city manager?
Thanks, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I think I understand what he's coming from. I have been an adjacent of his property since nineteen sixty-eight, and when I first moved there, one of the neighbor, two houses up, Billy Harris, had a pond with a frog, and it happened on our property, here at the spring. And the spring was connected subterranean by the end of the Derby Creek that came down from Derby Street and ended up in the vicinity of Oliver Lot there. And it was very, no culvert was ever made. So each time, there is lots of rain, then the water springs up and runs down Peabody Lane, and with the movement of trucks in Peabody Lane, before the water used to seep on the west, on the north side. But now, since the Peabody Lane has given in, then the water seeps in my property, and I'm having the flow of water that surge from the property from the old Derby Creek. And on surplus, I'm having the flow of water that come from St. Pablo Avenue all the way down and collect all the water from all the houses around the roof there. So I have tremendous amount of water in my basement, and I have to have three pumps. And if you look in this property there, at the end of the lot, he has a real creek coming on, going through his property, so something should be done. I think a brain, a storm drain should be installed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Welcome again, Ken.
I just wanted to ask if you're considering changing the elections to the even number years, how are you going to notify the public about that? And when do you have to make the decision?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Do you mind if I respond to that? Just because I had thought that that was on the agenda tonight, that that had been our direction, but I think there was an oversight, and I think it'll be coming back in January. It's not on our agenda this evening, but in terms of notification, that is a good question. Thank you.
Yes, please.
My name is Girmel Nehal, and I am the owner of property twelve sixty-eight Peabody Lane and twelve sixteen, no, twelve sixty-nine Peabody, twelve sixty-eight Ocean Avenue. My next door neighbor, I think all of you know that, what's going on there. It has very negative effect on my property. I have a hard time renting my unit when it's come vacant, because nobody want to live in that neighborhood. And it's very unhealthy, it's fire hazard, all that, everything over there. I don't know how you can take it. It's very negative effect on my property. I'm losing lot of money. Please do something. Please do something. I've been hassling with that for thirty-four year, and it keeps kicking. And it keeps getting worse. It's not getting better, it's getting worse and worse every day. And if something happen over there, I think the whole neighborhood will be totally blacked. It's fire, it's fire hazard totally. You can see that, maybe you go there every day. That, that city is got responsibility to, that neighborhood should be safe. My tenants, they are not safe over there. If there's big storm come, all that stuff will go to my property. And then I'll be liable for that, for my tenant. Please, please do something.
Okay, would you mind signing in too, please? So we get your name and address? Okay. Anybody else? Seeing nothing, no one else? City managers' report?
No reports tonight, Mayor.
We have the consent calendar and some items that we have to pull because we have to give you up some positions here.
I want to pull 5.6 and make some comments on 5.8.
You don't want to pull 5.7 too?
No.
I want to pull 5.7.
I do too.
There's no designation on there.
Yeah. And I, I'd just like to consider 5.5 as amended. We got on our, on the dais tonight an amended minutes that changed a motion, I was recused, I didn't make the motion and I asked for that to be changed in the minutes. So I don't need to discuss that further, but wanted the amended version to be considered.
Okay, we can do that. Is there anything else people would like to have polled?
I have a question about 5.11.
Okay.
I'm sorry, 5.11.
So we're at 5.6, 7, 8 and 5.11 to be polled.
Move the rest of the consent calendar, including the revised minutes for December 4th.
Thank you very much. And there was a second?
Yep, that was Ruth.
Ruth.
That was Ruth?
Yep.
All, that one passes?
Yep.
Okay, 5.6.
Okay, the general comment that I have is that while we're moving from away from two council members to council liaison, sometimes in the composition of these committees, the roster part is, lists council liaison, but the composition part still says two council members. So there's an inconsistency there that, that runs across a number of the, of the committees. So I just wanted to have that cleaned up a little bit before it gets finalized.
Okay. Any other comments?
No.
I also asked, actually, I, I think Councilmember Davis, I am the chair of the Transportation Committee, so I just asked them to change that on the Transportation Committee.
Yeah.
Is that correct? It's a different, it's not Advisory Standing Committee. It lists Councilmember Davis and I, I think it, it's actually myself.
Yeah, I, I think that happened a couple of times because also on public safety, Ms. Davis was listed and I think.
You are the chair.
Chair of that, so you gave me that. And I think Public Works, I am the chair.
Yes, you are.
See, I'll take another one back from you.
I'm trying to keep up, so.
Public Safety, Public Works, Transportation.
And I think those are the only comments I had on those.
Public Safety and Public Works, it's.
Brinkman.
Brinkman.
So those were the sub, council subcommittees. My, my comments related to the community advisory bodies.
Okay. And your comments are?
So I, I already gave them.
Excuse me, there was actually a mistake with the agenda that 5.6 and 5.7 are considered to be consent calendar items. 5.6 is just approving the roster based upon the changes that you made last time in terms of deleting some of the ad hoc committees and trying to get the roster pages, the more information that I have. So thank you for your comments, that will be included in the final. It's not actually appointing any community members. That will be brought back in February. The 5.7, sorry, 5.6 is the appointments for the regional committees as discussed last time with, I think it was Councilmember West stepping down from two and other council members stepping up. But 5.7 should have been an administrative item because it is appointing liaisons where there used to be the voting council members and those appointments got carried over. Usually the second meeting is when we, there is that, well, there's, I think, a little confusion about we were doing in one step, what in the past has been done with two steps. So what's being asked today is for you to approve a resolution and make the appointments in the same meeting. So it should have been a administrative item, not a consent calendar item.
Okay, so we're going to hold it over then?
It just needs to be.
Doing it now.
No, we're just, yeah.
Needs to be moved to as an administrative item.
I have one other question, I think this is still item 5.5. Oh, no, it's item 5.6. Oh, I mean 5.6, correct. Which is the Finance Advisory Committee. Right now, we have everyone's terms end at the same time. And on other committees, we've changed that to staggered years with a two-year term for the community representatives. And I wanted to bring that forward and see if council felt that the Finance Committee also should have staggered terms.
I always think it's the best way to do it, is to have staggered terms.
So do you want all the two-year terms? Because we have recently changed some, you recently changed the one-year terms to all two-year terms. So you want some staggered and some not, or, because that would change.
Staggered means that they're all two-year, but they end alternating years.
I understand that, but at this point, the ones that were changed to two years, they would all end in 2014. And so that was.
Split them half and half.
Right, so if you want to split them in half, that, I mean, I guess, I, I mean, some of them are not the same representation. It's not a uniform representation, so.
So like one resident and the other resident, one business, the other business?
But sometimes there are, it's, there are several different categories and there may only be one representative of a certain type.
Right.
So I would feel uncomfortable as staff to make the determination on, of, of.
Can I put forth a motion and see if everyone agrees then, on finance at least? That we would say that there's odd number, I don't know if you're looking at the page I am, but Fran Quittle and Liz Altieri are odd numbers listed and Stephen Cuddy, who's a labor representative, that, that they all have their terms extended by a year to 2014. And then the others, Bill Reuter and Benay Curtis Bauer, end in 2013. So that.
I second that.
So odd numbered would be 2014 and even would be 2013 for this first year.
Yep.
West and Davis, okay.
I think the others only list the ones whose the terms end in 2013, which is just half the committee.
So Mayor, now do we move on to the, the community advisory bodies?
We do.
Because that's where we have, right now, we have two council people. Now we have to change it to a liaison. So who is going to take the Bike Ped Committee?
Who would like to take the Bike Ped?
That's going to be me.
Okay.
Okay, so that's Jack.
Yeah.
Okay.
All of us are still welcome to attend any of those meetings.
Of course.
Excuse me, was there a, a, a motion and a second on 5.6?
And what about ECDC?
Wait, 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 there was a motion, was there a second on 5.6?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor Brinkman?
Child Development Center?
Mayor Brinkman?
Yes.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I noticed one small error under the Community Preservation Committee. I neglected to bring this to the city clerk's attention. But at your last meeting, you decided to change your regular meeting time, as you may recall, from the third Thursdays every three months to, I believe it's the fourth Wednesday. So at least for January and April of next year, it's going to be the fourth Wednesday. And I don't know if you want to continue that.
I'm sorry, which one are you talking about?
Page three of 22, the Community Preservation Committee. It says the third Thursday of January, April, July and October. And I believe that should actually be the fourth Wednesday.
Oh. Of, of all months or just some months?
Well, it went through April, I don't know if the committee wants to extend it to the rest of the year. If that was it.
Let's do the whole year and then if they want to change it, we can change.
We can cancel maybe.
So it'd be the fourth Wednesday then, fourth Wednesday.
So just replace the fourth Wednesday with what was there before?
Right.
Yeah, what was there was third Thursday and make it, change that to fourth Wednesday.
Okay. Okay, how about the Child Development Center?
Can we start from the top again?
Okay.
On 5.7.
Yes. Bike Ped.
Are the stand, the subcommittees?
We're on the subcommittees now. Advisory Committees, Advisory Bodies.
That's still 5.6, right?
There's the community advisory bodies and there's the city council subcommittees. So you're on the community advisory bodies first?
Community Advisory Bodies.
Wait, I, I think the question here on the part of staff is, do we want the, the council subcommittees to remain the way they are?
Yes.
Yes.
I would, I would make a motion to that effect.
Other than those modifications that we made.
I'll second that, but the actual council members who are on those committees are still.
Right.
Thank you, that was what I was trying to understand.
Okay.
Now let's go to the subcommittees.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Yeah.
Community Advisory Bodies. And let's start with the Bike Ped. And that was Jack Asher.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move to the Child Development Center.
I, I would like Councilmember Davis to serve on that committee. As the liaison.
All right, that's fine.
Problems, everybody okay with that? Okay. Commission of Aging. I would be willing to stay on that one.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Economic Development Committee.
That's vacant because it's newly created.
Yep.
I, I would like to serve in that committee.
Okay, is there any problem with that?
As a liaison, right?
Right, as a liaison.
Okay, Karen?
Do you need time?
I, I think I have it, but Pat's writing shotgun.
Okay. Finance Advisory Committee.
I'm sorry, which one are you on now?
Finance.
I'd like to do that.
Okay, you're getting loaded up again.
Can I then switch with you for ECDC? If you want to take Finance?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so you are now ECDC?
Yes.
Okay.
We just changed that.
Got it.
Got that one?
Yes.
Okay. Housing Advisory.
Me.
Excuse me, Mayor Brinkman, that is actually the Planning Commission by another name.
Oh, okay, that's, I'm sorry.
Well, that's the Housing Appeals. This is Housing Committee, not Housing Appeals Board.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were at Housing Advisory and Appeal Board.
No. No, I'll take the Housing Committee.
Okay.
Okay.
So you skipped Housing Advisory and Appeal Board.
Yeah, it's not on this list.
I see, all right.
At least when I'm looking at it.
Yeah, it's not on the list I'm looking at.
It's not on my piece of paper here in front of me, Charlie. So Park and Recs Committee.
I'll do that.
You, you will?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You skipped the Marina.
And the Park Avenue District Committee.
No, well.
We're all looking at page 81, Kurt, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Nice, okay.
So here we're at Marina.
Okay, Marina. You want that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that was Asher?
No, that's.
That's Davis.
Davis. Park Avenue District Advisory Committee, which is vacant.
Come on, step up, step up.
That's a Thursday meeting, right?
That's a really good meeting.
Yes, now you're trying to sell it.
You're trying to sell.
All right, I'll take it.
You're going to take it, Davis, okay?
Geez, guys.
Parks and Recreation Committee?
I, I volunteer for that.
Okay, and the Public Art Committee? I would take that again.
Okay.
Okay.
Who did we say was housing? I'm sorry.
Me.
Ruth.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And now moving on down to the community advisory bodies, ad hoc. Medical marijuana facility ad hoc task force.
Kurt, I thought you were interested in serving on that as liaison.
No, you're leading me.
I thought you said that before though, if I recall.
Oh, I'll do it. And the Shellmount, well, I'm, the Shellmount Street, Powell Street Bridge Ad Hoc.
I thought we were disbanding that until such time as it was moving forward.
No, that, this is the art, public art piece underneath the.
Oh, oh, oh.
It really should be subsumed under public art.
Yeah, let's, let's.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah, let's, let's, I make the motion to that. Move that up to public art.
Okay.
And then the last one there.
So you're saying delete it as an ad hoc?
Yep.
That's it.
Yes.
But we've already, we've already put people on that committee, the ad hoc.
Right, right.
Task force.
It'd be just a subcommittee for public art.
They will attend the Public Art Committee meeting, is what you're saying?
That'd be fine, yeah. Okay.
So that, that committee, can I step in on the Shellmount Committee? That, we have set another, a separate meeting time for that committee that works for all of the committee members here. So it could be a subcommittee to the public.
Exactly, a subcommittee.
It meets at a different time than the Public Art Committee.
Yeah.
How creative.
Nora, you're on the Economic Development, is that what?
That's right.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, moving on. We have a, is we all set?
So is there a motion and a second for all of those?
There's, is there a motion and a second for all of these?
Yeah, that's 5.7, yeah.
Right.
I'll take, make a motion.
Second.
Second? Yes, there is. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing.
No, wait, 5.8. I pulled 5.8.
And 5.11.
5.8.
Okay, so under the resolution, draft resolution, which is, what page is this on?
87.
87. There's a list that said, that talks about Joyce Jacobson serving on PAPCO, which is a citizens group of the Alameda County Transportation Commission. But as long as we're doing those committees of ACTC, we should add John Sherman to the resolution and renumber them because he's on the Citizens Advisory Committee. So I don't see why PAPCO would just get, would get that and, and the Citizens Advisory Committee would be left off. So I wa, I would like to amend the resolution to include the ACTC's Citizens Advisory Committee.
There were two commissions that if you look at the, at the staff report, that there was a distinction made between those regional committees in which the council makes an appointment of a community member and, but there was interest in recognizing the contribution of residents who are serving on other advisory bodies regionally, but may have been appointed by a board of supervisors or by another agency. So these are not, so Joyce Jacobson is actually appointed by the council to serve as that representative to PABCO. But John Sherman and I think it's Betsy Cooley, who's on the commission, the County Commission on Aging, are actually not appointed by the city council.
Actually, I nominated, I put John Sherman's name forward, that's incorrect. And so then that was, but that was voted upon at the commission level.
Right, not at the council meeting, not at the council level.
So that's, that's why you're, you're leaving him off?
And also Betsy Cooley, I recognize them in terms of the roster of.
Yeah, okay.
Of people, of immigrant residents being there.
I understand the thinking there, there.
You're on page ninety.
Okay.
Okay.
So that, that was my only, and then wait, page ten of nineteen, there was a, there was something there, hang on a sec. Let me go to that. Ooh.
Ten of nineteen is the Recycling Board, which is one possible place to serve, but it's not the same as the Waste Management Authority quite.
I thought there was something that were, there indicated a vacancy that wasn't vacant. Hang on. Let me just get there.
Just for the council's information, there are a couple other corrections that I asked Karen to make, such as the Alameda County Mayor's Conference, Kurt will be representing us there and Jack as an alternate.
Oh, wait, I guess I'm on the wrong page, I can't find it, but and then the Mayor's Conference change, should change, the names should change to Brinkman and Asher.
Right, there is a vacancy where I think Joyce Jacobson serves us, which is on the tenth, it's page twelve actually, but it's number ten of the committees, the PABCO, as we just talked about.
Oh, that's, yeah.
It says vacant, but it should say Joyce Jacobson.
Okay, you found what I was looking at then. Yeah, Emeryville Representative is vacant, yeah, item ten, right. And that isn't correct.
Any other changes, modifications? Or corrections?
No, so with that I move five eight.
Okay, is there a second?
And our, our, people who serve on the League of California Cities, we seem to appoint those right before the conferences rather than as an annual position. We've had some vacancies, it was pointed out, and I thought it makes sense to do it right before the conference, if you agree.
Yeah, no, because it does, because of travel.
Yeah, although I'm stepping up to do East Bay Division.
Right, which is different, that's a regular monthly meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
So we have motion and a second.
Who is second?
I motioned.
Second.
Davis. Wouldn't doubt Davis always says. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. Okay. Five point eleven?
Yeah, in reading this, and maybe since Nicolau is here, he can answer some questions about this. As I was reading over it, there were some things that I really liked, like having the taxing entities have a say in voting on the tax increment. One of the things I had a question about though is that the, the board that gets appointed for the Infrastructure Financing District, they said that there will be three electeds on it and then two members of the public. Who are these people, how do they get appointed?
That is a great question, and through the chair, I don't have that answer, but I can easily get that for you.
Okay.
Because I do wonder who's going to make those appointments. So the question is, who makes the appointment? And then.
Are they electeds, are they serving for, on the other taxing entities, or?
I have the, three of the members of the city council.
Right.
And then.
And then it said two members of the public.
Of the public, gotcha, okay. I can get more clarification for you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do you want to move that one?
Yeah, and with that I moved the item.
Second, okay, all in favor? Now I believe that's it for the consent calendar unless I missed something. So now we have public comment, and this is the Thirty-Ninth and Adeline Residential Project. And I think that we have two speakers.
Mayor Brinkman?
Yes.
Public hearing.
Would you like?
I'll comment on six point one.
Not yet.
No, we have to have staff report first.
Can we have a report first before we open the public hearing?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Brinkman, members of the city council, you have before you tonight a request for an extension of the entitlements of a residential project at Thirty-Ninth and Adeline Streets. As I'm sure you recall, this was before you, two weeks ago. And after some discussion, it became apparent that there were not three votes to approve this extension. And so you had some discussion about it and decided to, to continue it to tonight's meeting. Since that time, the applicant has been working to rearrange the unit mix at the council's request and to attempt to provide more larger units and more family-friendly units. So they have done that. In the event that there are three votes tonight to approve this, based on the applicant's efforts, we have in your packet a resolution to approve the extension. If there are not three votes tonight to extend these entitlements, we also have in your packet a resolution to deny the extension. Staff's recommendation continues to be, as it was previously, that you approve this extension request. And with that, I would introduce John Protopappas and Frank Flores from Madison Park to describe the changes to you. I also have a thumb drive here that I have to go plug in and bring up their PowerPoint, so please bear with me for a couple of minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm John Protopappas, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to present our extension request to you. I also want to thank each of you for giving us your thoughts and your feedback. We, we listened, and I want to thank staff also. We got a lot of great recommendations, and we believe what we are bringing to you, our revised project, is a significantly better project than the project that we presented to you two weeks ago. We're excited about it, we believe that we can build it, and we can, at the same time, we can also get it financed. So we're excited to, to present this, and as Charlie's getting the PowerPoint up, our company was founded about almost thirty years ago, we're in Oakland, California. We focus on urban, supply-constrained properties, and we specialize in historic reuse. We have, as you know, we've been working on the other three phases of Bakery Lofts. Bakery Lofts Phase One was completed in two thousand and two, it consists of fifty-seven units. It's also one of those developments that is partly in Oakland and partly in Emeryville. B Two Lofts, our Phase Two, was completed in two thousand and six, and that consists of thirty-six apartments. And we're currently working on B Three and B Four. Consists of seventy-nine apartments, a cafe, and approximately three thousand square feet of retail space. And you could see, those are, are the recent photos of the project as it's being framed currently. We expect Phases One, or I should say that the Emeryville Phase, to be completed in late May, and the Oakland Phases to be completed in August. So the timing is perfect for us to move forward to work on Thirty-Nine Hundred Adeline Street. This is a rendering of what the project will look like when it's completed. You know, as you know, there are, the site sits on a little over an acre. We currently have about thirteen tenants on the site, they're all on month-to-month leases. They would all like this project, quite frankly, to be denied so that they could stay and have long-term leases signed. But we're pretty excited about this development, we believe it significantly adds to the, to the community. As I mentioned, our focus is, has really been on adaptive reuse. And this is a list of photos of some of the projects that we have developed in the past. And we looked at this site with the idea that we wanted to purchase this to reuse this, this existing building. So we did our analysis, and we, we analyzed the corner elements, as you could see in this slide, at the request of the Oakland Landmarks Board. We completed an environmental impact report analyzing the historic significance, completed a traffic study. And what we found was that the project to, to renovate this existing building, it really was unsuitable and not feasible financially. The only real existing path of development was to really, to tear this down and to build a new site, a new development. And that's what we have before you. And of course, like many of the projects, off of Adeline Street, seventy-five, approximately seventy-five percent of this site is in Oakland and twenty-five percent is in Emeryville. Seventy-five in Emeryville, twenty-five in Oakland, thank you Frank. I'm, I'm confusing it with Bakery Lofts Phase One. This is the process that we went through, starting in two thousand and six. And I'd like my colleague Frank Flores to come up and continue the presentation, and of course, I will be available for questions.
Thank you, John.
Evening, Mayor Brinkman, council members. So there you can see the extensive meetings with even the last time we were here, not including tonight. As John had mentioned, we met with four of the five council members. You've all taken a look at this matrix of changes, but I'll go over it again, our original approvals. We were asked by Councilmember Atkins to, at our second extension, to come back with studios converted into ones. We took about twenty studios, converted them to ones, that's where we were on the fourth. After meeting with the four council members between the fourth and today, we were asked to create some more family-sized units. And so you can see that we took eight one-bedrooms. And I'll show you in a second how we did that architecturally. We created two-bedroom units, seven two-bedroom units, and one three-bedroom. So we end up with twenty-two percent, what you would call family-friendly, I guess, larger than one-bedrooms. The smaller elevation on the bottom is before. What's being proposed tonight is pop-ups on six areas of the lofted units. Everything lofted prior to tonight was the, the three-bedroom units, bedrooms going upstairs with another bathroom. In a couple of cases, there were two bedrooms as well, and you'll see that on the floor plans. What we're proposing now, you can see, we popped up those cans to add a second floor to the one-bedrooms, now creating two-bedrooms and the one additional three-bedroom. There was a question, I think from staff, can we do this pragmatically? Will it pass the smell test for the building apartment? And certainly with enough engineering, you can build just about anything. It's not leaning. These are the other two elevations where this would occur, on Yerba Buena on the bottom and Thirty-Ninth Street, the largest of the longest elevation. And then the floor plans, I apologize for how small it is, but I did pass around the cells and essentially what the red changes are saying. The green boxes on this, this is the first level on top of the parking and the podium. The blank area in the middle is the courtyard, which we'll look in a second, at in a second. The green boxes are the converted studios, two of the converted studios. The larger light-green box is the community room, which we'll look at at the end too, because there were some comments from council members about what the community room should look like. Otherwise, there are no changes here. There's, for the sake of the audience, there's a fine dotted line diagonally through the site. Oakland is to the right, Emeryville's to the left. This is the second floor. The only changes here were in Emeryville, the green boxes were studios, they're now one-bedrooms. At the third floor where most of the changes occurred, the red boxes, the four red boxes are one-bedrooms that were popped up, and we'll look at the mezzanine level in a moment. Also on the flatiron, two more studios were converted to one-bedrooms. And then in the summary on the right, which you might be able to see on your screen, is just the changes. The converted units say CONV, converted. These are the lofted areas. Every, in every case, a lofted area has an open area at the top of the stair as well, which in theory could be a play area for kids, a computer room, a romper room, storage, that sort of thing. So you don't just come up into a bedroom or onto a landing, there's actually a sizable loft area up there, which is an, an extra room or an extra piece.
Can I just ask you, when you say mezzanine, you mean it's really a, a fourth floor or the third floor extended up, correct?
It's, it's not.
It's a half-floor?
No, it's not, it's at the same level, it's a two-story.
Right.
So you come up into the second story, and there isn't a room, there's about ten feet by eight feet of just open area to land.
Or you get to the fourth floor.
There isn't another floor, that's in one unit, that's, so it's just a two-level unit. Kind of like a townhouse, just two-level townhouse.
But it's above the third floor?
Right. Oh, I'm sorry, it's the, it's, it's actually what you might consider the fourth story.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Any more questions about the floor plans? We brought the parking back, there were a lot of questions about bicycle parking. The number of parking spaces certainly, by changing the units' sizes, that changes the parking requirements, not by much, but by some. Right now, the original approval, we have thirty bicycle parking, storage. So there's two rooms at the top of this plan that say bicycle storage, one says nineteen, one says eleven. And then also on the podium, there's a bicycle rack for five to ten spaces. That meets the requirements as they were in two thousand and eight. We haven't proposed any other changes here. This matrix I put together this morning, so it's probably incorrect, basically breaks it down, Oakland's requirements for parking on the Oakland units. Now, there is an MOU between Oakland and Emeryville now that everything is kind of, from here on, after the approvals, building permit and so forth would go through Emeryville. So the MOU was, I think in two thousand and eight. Oakland's requirements for parking are basically one space to a unit, any size unit. We have work-live units in Oakland, they required work-live units. It's a housing-business-mix zone in Oakland. And the work-live units, tenants can live there and work there, but if you, you have to have a building, you have to have a business license. So they really want you to have a business operating out of the space. So there's six work-live units. As you can see, there's four work-live-work units in Oakland, and the requirement for parking there was one and a half at the time. One and a half also for twos and threes, correct me when I'm wrong, Charlie?
That's right.
Ones for studio, one space for studios and one-bedrooms. And there also at the time, a requirement, point two-five spaces for all of the units, except for the live-work, for guest parking, which comes out to eighteen point seven-five. So all in, we were required to have a hundred and twenty-four, we've provided a hundred and seven. There was a variance, which at the time was approved. I was asked multiple times about the affordability, which wasn't discussed at the twelve-four meeting. I just cut and pasted that pretty obviously, right from the conditions of approval. And I think staff could elaborate better on the process that happens, but as we understand it, fifteen percent of the units will be affordable. As you can see, for rental units, nine percent at moderate and six percent at very low. That was based on, at the time, so that's cut right from the original staff report and right from the original conditions of approval. And there's no comment, so there, it's my understanding that maybe the Housing Committee would listen to this, and there'd be discussion about what units those would be, fifteen percent. One council member asked about the podium, whether there was a lot of open area for kids to run around. We certainly designed that green area and to have, to house playground equipment, and we're showing now a couple of pieces of those playground equipment. The red arrows were added to show that you could circulate around as a quote-unquote "track." It's a hundred and thirty feet long, sixty-five feet, sixty to sixty-five feet wide. And kids can go round and round and round and round on their bicycles, running around screaming, and it's fine. Without being impeded by stupid architectural things, right?
You can guarantee no neighbors are going to mind that?
No, that'll be fine. That'll be just fine. These are some of the imagery we used in the original design with the Planning Commission and City, City Council. It wasn't brought back, but that's the dome we were looking at. It's sort of appeals to adults as well as kids. Certainly, everything appeals to kids, so if you can find a mix, it's a good thing. We added some other imagery there, the grasses, bottom left, I apologize, everything's so small. But instead of what you might see on the landscape plan as sculpture, garden sculpture, this is what we're talking about, interactive sculptures, so you can get on them and ride them. They all work with inertia, so you get on, it just starts spinning you around. The green isn't grass, it's turf area, this will be a pet-friendly building, like all of our buildings that we own. This is imagery of the paving, because we, again, we were asked about what it would look like. In a lot of cases, we're going to reuse the brick from the original facade. But where we can't, we'll be using this kind of paving. The fountain also would be interactive. We, right now, it's going to be a fountain wall, so it's kind of spitting out left and right, so you could reach in and wash your hair. And lastly, the community room, which this is the floor plan blown up. We were asked by a council member to add storage, so we did that in the bottom left. And as well as a room divider, and this image I found on Google shows basically what that would look like in case you had somebody having a birthday party and on the other side of the room, having a community room. So the ability to split up uses. The community family room also spills out right onto the courtyard, and it's adjacent to the building manager's unit and the office, the onsite office. That is all, I'm here for questions. Put it back on the original. Put it back on the original.
Mayor, can I make some comments?
Yes.
Well, I'm impressed with the changes you've made very quickly, frankly. And I have some concerns, and I have some other suggestions and things I'd like to consider.
Mayor Brinkman, excuse me, may I suggest that you hear, that you have, hold the public hearing before you talk?
That's fine.
Can I just ask that we don't close the public hearing, so that when the public gets to hear our comments, they can respond to them too if they wish?
Okay.
That's just a thought.
Open up public hearing, please come on.
One of the things about the bakery loft that I'm thinking about that is positive, the existing bakery loft, is people have had stoop sales right at the fairly nice street-level bakery loft, and it creates community. Neighbors meet each other. Bicycle and pedestrian committees have met each other when they're doing our bicycle event for the year there, and it's street-level. It opens out to the street. My impression of this project is it's a podium-style development that just doesn't get people in that transition zone that makes for community. And having more family housing is good. We need more family housing. But to have an architectural style that encourages community, I think, is important. And that's what the bakery loft currently has right now, that I don't see in this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank, why don't you come back a little bit later? Let's get the public comment. Anybody else? Come on up, Andre.
I'm wondering, is there no underground parking here?
There is.
How many?
107, Andre.
107. So it's not going to be a parking trough then?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Parking what?
Trouble. Now, there's a famous expression used by oil companies and what have you. It's called greenwashing. That's where industries that are not very ecologically friendly engage in a public selling of their green bona fides. It's called greenwashing. So I'm watching, I'm looking at this project here now, and the new, newest iteration, it seems like I came up with a new concept, is kid washing. Suddenly now, this is like the greatest thing for kids that we could ever have here. And in fact, if you really look at this thing, I don't think this is family-friendly at all. I don't think we're going to have any, maybe one family or something, maybe one or two or something. This is just another loft condo development, of which we have way too many in town right now. And I do appreciate Ms. Atkins' comments in the previous meeting, where you said we need more family-friendly housing. I agree with what Scott Donnie who said about the podium development. That's not a family-friendly thing to have a podium, have the children be isolated from the streets, very alienating. I listened to what the developer said. He said that it's not feasible to save the historic building. Seems like a new way of saying it won't pencil out. Seems like maybe somebody told him to not use the terms "won't pencil out," because that's what developers historically have always said here in Emeryville, that you just say the words "it won't pencil out," and then you are, then the city council says, "Okay, well then do whatever you want." So I guess we're over, we're finished with those days. Now it's, it isn't feasible. I just think of this, we need to have, we need to have a change up here. As Ms. West said, there's a new paradigm in Emeryville. This is the wrong kind of housing. We have a chance here to correct a mistake made by the council four years ago. And regarding Mr. Brinkman's comments last meeting, that this is not fair to the developer to not automatically extend for another year this project that they're not starting. There's no reasonable person could construe that as not being fair. What about being fair to the residents' needs? We have needs to develop a livable city here, and we have schools that need children, and so it's not fair to us. And I just think you should be concerned, when you're going to talk about what's fair or not, you should be concerned with the residents before the developers. These guys haven't broken ground, they're not invested in any way in this property other than the fact that they have, they've had exclusive use of it for four years, and they want another year. And so you can't construe that as being unfair to them. And like I said, I think you should be considered, what's fair to the residents before the developers.
Thank you, Brian.
Well, I guess I have a different opinion than Brian does. I mean, this guy has worked really hard on this project for a long time. And for somebody that's going to put up 50% financing, that's an extraordinary amount of risk. Nobody else is going to take that risk here. You know, if you have a time limit, you know, you enforce it if you got something better or if it's going to turn over. But you're not going to get any more improvement than this. I mean, I wish it had a little more older-style design. But if you look at what's there now, and you know, maybe the enclosed yard isn't a better idea, but in the area that it's located, maybe it is. I mean, you're going to put kids out there. You want to have some measure of protection, you don't want to, I mean, the street just isn't, hasn't met the point when you can put people out there safely all the time, especially at night. I would hope you would move forward with this. There's nothing else going to happen there if this doesn't go forward. I know you hear that all the time, but look at where this is located. Really needs economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Bob Cantor with the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. Just a couple of things, as some of us were a little taken aback at the December meeting when you voted to hold this over. Let's remember, this is the last request for an extension, the last one that can be granted. So this is the last, I believe it expires in January, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Proto Pappas was directed to negotiate and work with staff to come back with larger, more family, and in a very short period, which appears to have been done. There is a lot invested here. There's a lot of time and money just to get to this point. You saw the sequence of meetings that Frank mentioned, I think go back to 2006, I believe. That's now six years of a lot of work and time with nothing else really happening. And with anyone who knows anything about what you have to do to get financing for these kind of projects, this is a very, very difficult environment. We're getting a little better since 2008, but it's still very difficult. It appears from what I just saw tonight that Mr. Proto Pappas has met most, if not all, of the conditions that you asked him to do when, at the December, the first meeting this month. The time is running out for this, so this is the best shot you're going to get. It looks good to us, so we'd urge you to move forward with this, as the staff has recommended you do. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Seeing that, I'm going to close the public comment.
Could you keep the public hearing open?
Yes, okay.
After I propose some things, there may be. Thank you. So if it's okay, I'll go ahead. Okay, thank you. Sorry to be. So first, I'm going to, I'm going to propose a few additional amenities that I think would be excellent for this particular location. This is, I think, a location that is special in Emeryville because it is near a transit hub, which is our 40th and San Pablo intersection. It's well-served by public transit. I take the bus there several times a week myself. And it also has a TransBay bus, the F, that goes straight to San Francisco. So in talking with Madison Park, I suggested a few items that would further, I think, improve the project and the quality of life then for the residents of that project. And I'd like to put these forward and see if the council might be willing to ask the developer to include some of these in their conditions of approval, if we were to move forward on this. One item is to have a car-share pod available, and I think I'm not the only one who brought that up, but instead of asking for the car-share to be housed within the public, or I'm sorry, within the private parking, I think it would be better to have that car-share housed on the street, if possible, in a designated location, so that it would be actually available to people who live in Andante, Avalon, other areas. And I would like to see if we could incorporate that perhaps into this development project. I don't think it would be a significant cost, but I think it'd be a great addition to that area. I don't know currently what car-share locations there are in the Triangle neighborhood, and maybe if someone has that information, that would be good to share. None? This would be 100% improvement. The second one is something that's in our new parking zoning update, which is about unbundling the parking. Charging the tenants for the cost of their parking space not only indicates to them the actual cost of building that parking space, actually, it's much reduced from the actual cost. It costs a lot to build parking, especially if it's underground somewhat, as this would be. And so it's a price signal, and it helps people to realize what the costs of owning a car are. I know, I believe with affordable housing, you cannot charge for the parking, and so there might be some restrictions in terms of the units that are designated affordable, which I think, by my calculations, would be 12 affordable units, if I did the numbers in Emeryville correctly with the 15%. But by unbundling and charging something, a monthly lease or for the parking, I think it would improve not only, or it would reduce car ownership, which is a little bit of concern because they have a very small parking ratio, which I think is good, but there are some other things you can put in place to kind of help the residents with that. So unbundling is a second item. And then the last one is something that I just am amazed I didn't know about until the last few months, but it's the EZ Pass system that is offered by AC Transit. And it's a 90% discount on passes if they're bought in bulk, in 100 quantity. Instead of 150 a month, which is what I would pay for a transit pass that would take me across to San Francisco every day, it's $80 to $120 a year.
Wow.
So it's an incredible discount. And if Madison Park were willing to buy, commit to buying 100 passes and offering one per unit to their residents, I think, again, we would see that this parking is more than adequate, actually, for the needs of these residents, and they would be taking advantage of their, their location. So these are things that, in my discussions, Madison Park seemed open to and was willing to consider, and I wanted to put that forth to council and staff and see if there was any, any willingness to consider those.
If I could comment, Mayor. Jennifer, I think each one of those items, especially given the location of this building, would be very, very workable, and I would be interested, I would support that, and I would be interested to hear, after we're all finished talking, from the developer as to way he could build this in to the, to the cost of the unit, the price of the unit, because we're, that's moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council about this project?
Well, my only other comment is I'm still, 22% for family possible units, I'll call them, is a big improvement over 14%. It's not as many as I would like to see personally in a project, given how much we're compensating for years and years of not building family-friendly units in town. This is a good location in terms of where our schools are located, and I would like to see even more, if possible. I'm also concerned about the very small square footage of each unit. In our conversations, I understand that they've been successful with small square footage units and other developments, but it just, it's a little shocking to me. They're kind of micro-units, some of them. And I'm worried there's not enough bike parking, because I think actually, if we put in place some of these mobility management strategies that I've suggested, you're going to see a lot more people wanting bikes. But with the extra parking that's kind of freed up, we might have space for those bikes too, so.
Okay. Comments?
I'd like to make one other comment on the, the car-share pod. That would be in the public right of way, right?
Yes.
And how do, how would those arrangements arrived at?
Well, I believe it'd have to go to the Transportation Committee for approval to designate a parking space, and then I think they have to just make an arrangement with one of the various car-share companies to, to do that. I don't know what, how, I don't know the details, but there are already a number of car-share pods in the city.
Exactly. 53rd Street, then we have one down by the Amtrak Station.
And maybe if I could just chime in on that. This issue came up when the paper mill project, now called Parkside, was approved by the council back in November 2008. I believe it was at the council meeting that the car-share pod was suggested for that project, and so there's a condition of approval on that project that I think we could certainly add to this one. It simply says, "Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall make a good-faith effort to install one car-share pod on any street fronting the project site. Such good-faith effort shall be documented to the satisfaction of the planning director." So you could use the same language here, if you wish.
I have a question for Jennifer. Your idea about this EZ Pass, I'm not exactly sure how many people, how usable that is. So for example, if I were to try to take a bus to work, where I work, AC Transit doesn't even go. It's a different bus system. So I'm a little, Clipper is the only, a Clipper card is the only thing that really spans transit agencies right now in the Bay Area. I don't know if there's a way of offering discounted Clipper cards, but quite frankly, just to, just to give AC Transit bus passes, I mean, that might not really fit very many people's needs.
Right.
So I have a lot of reservations about that, let alone the financing, and like, if we have people who move, who move there because they work in town, then they don't need a transit pass. So there, there's a lot of double, you know, details to be worked out of like, well, we could, we could condition this on the developer, but yet, if, if for some strange reason, everybody worked in town, they wouldn't be taking the bus. So there's not really, I'm not really sure how to make that idea of a transit pass usable in terms of what you're suggesting, you know, so.
I hear what you're saying. You know, there are, there are people, I'm sure, who are given free transit passes and don't use them.
Yeah.
But it's a very small cost.
On, on the AC Transit, these are bulk buys, and you wouldn't necessarily need to have a transit pass for every unit, but you would have something available if people had an interest in it. And I think it shouldn't be freely given. There has to be some buy-in by the people that use it.
Some express need for it.
But if you set up like a bulk buy, and people kind of chip into it, that's accessible to them without going down to AC Transit, then you've got a workable system. And I don't know how difficult that would be.
They just have rules to follow.
Yeah, and that would solve the problem. You don't just hand out the free passes, because Ruth is right. But if people have a buy-in and an easy place to buy into a bulk buy, then you're, then you're really going to change behavior.
We're going to have a public comment in a couple of minutes. We're, okay.
Yeah. I want to thank both Frank and John for meeting with me. I, of course, second the, the car-share pod. The Triangle does not have a car-share pod, and even though there's one across San Pablo, sometimes San Pablo is an incredible geographic barrier for our neighborhood. And I think it would also be used by other people in the 94608 on the Oakland side. So I'm, I'm very supportive of that idea. I, I was glad to see that there was some movement in the three bedrooms and the two bedrooms. For me, though, I, I remain concerned that we simply are painting ourselves into a corner in Emeryville, and with each project that we approve, we don't have enough family-friendly housing. And I'm, I'm not sure how we're going to overcome that and support our schools. I, I think that people want to live in Emeryville. I think people with families do. I think that's going to be even more true, because our elementary school is the last public non-charter in the 94608 zip code, and we've finally reached a threshold in terms of scores, and scores are often important for families, where I think our elementary school is really going to be in high demand. So for me, there, there are things about the project that, that are appealing. I really appreciated. I really appreciated talking with both Frank and John, but I would like to see more three-bedroom units in particular.
Okay, you have the comments?
I just have one of, of the developer. I'd like to have a comparison between Bakery Loft, as far as the elevations, and this project, because we heard something as far as a sense of community. And I, looking at this picture of this drawing, I thought it was pretty level to the ground. And actually, if I remember, Bakery Loft is a couple steps to get up onto it.
Well, we don't.
We don't have the one of the.
We don't have an elevation of the front of the bakery here. That's, bottom right is inside of the courtyard before anybody, I think, really lived there. If you go in there now, those ficus trees are 10 times that size, and everybody's kind of adorned their back areas with their own little taste, and it looks great. I think you've all probably been there. On the front, the stoop is, Scott Donahue mentioned, yes, it's pretty drawn in. The stairs are fairly level, even though there's just four stairs, and it's a great spot to have yard sale, garage sales. I lived there for 10 years and sold a lot of junk and bought a lot of junk there, up until recently. And I'll, I guess, address that question now. What you can't see in the elevations that I'm showing you, but what I did hand out in the last meeting, if anybody has that, is that the air, if, if you look at proposed, that's the Adeline Street elevation. And underneath those bridges in the middle is a big 25 to 30-foot opening that you can look right into the courtyard. There are some stairs that go up, and that drawing that I gave you shows that those stairs are made out of the brick from the facade. That's recessed in as far, as deep as the Bakery Lofts. We've created three of these. There's one on Yerba Buena, there's one on 39th, and there's one on Adeline. It's just as spacious and just as inviting as the Bakery Lofts, I would say. And I would imagine the same sort of activities would happen there.
And also to the right, I believe where the restaurant is, that looks like that's a grade level.
We were also asked to recess that flat iron. As the way it is now, it's right on the property line. We were asked to take that back by, I believe, this council and the commission. And that also is reusing the bricks, and there's a patio space there, in theory, for the retail, but certainly it's open. It's not, you can't enclose it. So if you're walking down the street and the cafes close, you're still going to go and sit in there.
Yeah, but, but one, I guess I'm getting at Frank is, as you're walking down, there's no steps to get up into that space?
There is not.
Okay.
But to get into the courtyard, there's some steps.
That's correct.
Do you know how many steps?
It looks like six to 10, but they're wide, again, like the bakery. There's also stoops. Those units to the left and the right of the opening are, are the live-work units. The idea that we were given the direction at the time was that these were supposed to be active spaces. So those are the live-work units with their own entry in the front with stoops, as well as entry from the back.
Okay. Well, we're going to open up the public comment. Why don't we just, can we just line up here and come on up as your time is up or your thoughts are up?
On the Bike Ped Committee, we've noticed that Emeryville is really getting concerned, partly in our direction, but out of necessity with bicycle parking in our new residences. And our goal on the committee is to make it easier to use a bicycle than to use a car. And often bicycle parking is sort of an adjunct condition for most developments. It's a room tucked away. You have to hang your bicycle. What our committee would love is that you have your bicycle as accessible, as horizontal as a car, and there's your helmet, and it's right next to your bike, and you easily roll it out and attach your trailer or not. In other words, most short trips could be faster on a bicycle if the development were set up to give that ease of access in and out, without having to carry your bicycle upstairs, to protect your bicycle so that it isn't being destroyed by the weather, to make sure it's not going to be robbed. This is the kind of detail, over years of living, that makes a big difference for a lifestyle that our city would really like to encourage. A lot less car use and a lot more bicycle and pedestrian activity in our city. So if this development could really demonstrate that ease of access to getting a bicycle or multiple bicycles, like my family, for example, has, we have a tandem, we have two single bikes, we, I have a road bike, a mountain bike, a fold-up bike. All these specialized bicycles, if you bicycle a lot, make a difference. And the total volume of them is maybe a car space, but, you know, that, it, it matters. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Ken?
On the bus passes now, is this project going to have to pay for the Emery Ground? Because are you going to pay for the Emery Ground and you're going to pay for bus passes, too? I mean.
Yeah, their conditions of approval, I think, include.
So that's, that's, you know, that Emery Ground is a pretty big contribution, so I don't know if you can just add transit passes to that. And then the thing about family-friendly housing. I mean, you know, if I remember the demographics correctly, there's already enough kids in Emeryville to fill the school. It's just that the parents aren't sending them there. I mean, maybe you keep building three bedrooms and three bedrooms, but that doesn't mean they're going to send their kids to the school. I mean, once the school gets improved, they're going to be full of Emeryville people. I mean, is it overkill? I mean, don't we have to take a look at how many three bedrooms we have? How many more do we need to meet the school capacity? And then we need to look at who's living in these three bedrooms. If we find out that it's all students, then, you know, what are we doing here? We're not really creating family-friendly housing. And those people need cars. Do you know any families that don't have a car? I mean, you put in more family housing, you need more parking for those folks. I mean, I wouldn't put my kids on AC Transit. Thank you.
Okay.
I was waiting for, and nobody came about. I'm looking at the issue of energy here. First, would the building be fed by electricity or garage, or both? And also, since we have that big garage, is it going to have any outlet for electric vehicle? Even hybrid vehicle have an outlet? So there is something that is missing there, if hasn't been planned. And second, I see also another large building being built, and there is no room for solar panel. I don't see any plan for, I mean, is it any concern to save energy? And also, we are also, here in Emeryville, we are lucky. We have the water table, which is portable, at very low reach. And it takes very little. In other words, it could be something like a watt and a half for a gallon of, of portable water. And this could be set up for emergency purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Frank. Is there any other public comment? Brian, come on up. Let's let Brian do his first.
Okay. Well, I just heard Mr. Bukowski say something that's really kind of outrageous, that we're now in overkill for family-friendly housing in Emeryville. In other words, there's way too much of it. We shouldn't have so much, which is patently false. If you look at the demographics, the remarkable thing about Emeryville is there aren't any kids here. You look, compare us to Oakland, compare us to Berkeley, compare us to all our neighbors, the thing that stands out about Emeryville is there are no children here. That's sort of fatuous. Of course, there are some children here, but essentially, that's the thing that is remarkable about Emeryville, no kids. So that's kind of ridiculous. However, Ms. Bukowski did make a good point, and that is that where, where we have built three-bedroom projects in this, that as planned unit developments with three bedrooms in this town, commonly they've been rented out by, or whatever, by students, like college students. And then there's one kid per room or whatever. And that's not what we're trying to do. So this, this council, you guys keep making this mistake about, you're assuming that family-friendly housing is three-bedroom condominiums. And if you listen to what the experts tell us, and they made presentations here a couple of years ago, it's more than just getting developers to build three-bedroom units, although that helps. And, and this project doesn't have the ingredient, the vital ingredients that you were told by the, the experts that made their presentation. And then even, even other experts that you didn't listen to have, have made other points about what constitutes family-friendly housing in an urban context. Like, for instance, the whole PUD idea is sort of problematic. If you, if you look at cities that are, that have a lot of children, like Brooklyn, New York, it's, what it is, a small parcel of land, narrow townhouses, brownstones, tall, little private backyard, so you could, your kid can be in the backyard unattended, so you can do chores, whatever, without constantly having to look out there. And, you know, there are other ingredients other than just three bedrooms. And besides the fact that this project doesn't have enough even of the three bedrooms. So let's not kid ourselves. This is not family-friendly housing. And we have way too much of this kind of development already. And so this kid-washing that's going on here is sort of shameful. And let's, let's just really say that, call a spade a spade here. It's another loft condo project with a couple of three bedrooms thrown in there to make you guys feel better when you go to the, go for reelection, I guess. But this is, that we should not be pursuing this kind of housing. We need to support our schools. This isn't going to be supporting our schools. And you guys all say you're in favor of the Center for Community Life, and you're in favor of spending, you know, putting a huge public investment in, in our new schools, and yet you're dropping the ball here when it comes time to asking a developer for something other than just saying yes automatically.
I'm enclosed a public hearing now. So you have the comments from, okay, Frank, you're up.
Thanks. I'm just going to respond to council member comments. The car share pod in between the 4th and today, I called city car share and zip car. I have not gotten a return call, but I will say I am a card-carrying member. So I will continue to make those calls. And I speak for the ownership when I say, yes, we will put in a car share pod there. We may have to come back to get your support. Sometimes they want support from the city, say, yes, we want it there. And there's a lot of curb cuts there that are going to be taken away. So certainly we're adding a lot of street parking. All those aprons going into all those units are being taken away. So I think there's some 15 of them. So we're adding a lot of street parking. We can put a car pod in. Transit passes, when we met with Councilmember West, we agreed to that. I think maybe one way to do it is to buy the 100 bulk, maybe 107, 101, since we have 101 units, and offer them. And hopefully people will take them. We won't just hand them out obligatory. Hopefully, they won't have an expiration date, and we'll just have them in the office. We have an office and a resident manager who can kind of divvy them out as needed.
I think it's an annual, it's like a one-year purchase.
Okay. So maybe we can work a deal out with them, but thanks. We'll take the information. I believe unbundling is already in the conditions. I found it a couple of spots in staff reports, but I didn't see the actual wording. Certainly, we're open to tagging the parking unbundling and doing what it takes to have unbundled parking there. Go ahead.
Can I ask a question of clarification? Because of the way the affordable housing laws are written, the unbundled portions would apply only to the market rate rentals only?
Right.
Okay.
I believe so. You can't charge the affordable units for parking.
Understood. We won't break the law. Family size and friendly, I think Councilmember Asher mentioned that. One thing we didn't say, but I think we mentioned in the meeting, at least with you and maybe with Councilmember West, the family-friendly ordinance that has yet to be out or approved in terms of family-friendly floor plans and family, creating family-friendly housing. If we can have the flexibility to reposition the, the layouts of the larger units, the twos and threes, and meet those guidelines when they're out, that would, that would be great. And generally, usually the floor plans aren't, we don't talk about floor plans at Planning Commission. I know that we didn't. And so talking about floor plans is a little bit odd, but I can see the purpose here. From the developer's standpoint, we will take a look at and work with staff on the threes and twos and the affordable units to make sure the layouts work for families. Bakery Phase 1 and Phase 2, as much as we say three bedrooms and two bedrooms are what families want, we have three families in there with kids, two families with two kids, and one family with a newborn, and they've been there. Both of the two families have been there for a long time. Raw is one of them, who's on the Housing Advisory Committee. They're not maybe styled after family-friendly, but in those cases, they love having their kids there. And it works for them. So we might not be the family, the family housing developer, but I dare you to go out there and find a, a one that is on the, on the for-profit side. But we're trying. We have five three-bedrooms at Bakery Phase 3, which we call B4 in Emeryville, that will be opening up in May and June. So if you've got families who wants housing in Emeryville, five three-bedroom units with a very ample courtyard, stoops, the whole works, opening up soon. This adds another six on Adeline, all within 500 yards of the school. We're trying. Bicycle parking, I think at the time, 30 spaces in enclosed was pretty good. And putting, obviously, it's changed. I'm a biker, too. I've got three bikes. I understand what Mr. Scott Donahue was saying. And I, I, I'd like to appeal to that and say to council, we, we can't fit more parking in there for cars. We can take a spot away and add bike parking. We're happy to do that, even two, if, if need be. Or would you like us to work directly with the Bike Ped Committee and staff to figure out a way to get more spaces, to make it workable? We just want to make it work. We don't want to tuck it in the back. Architecturally, that's how it's shown. But to make it practical, we're happy to work with the Bike Ped Committee and, and maybe position it in three or four different areas that's closer to the front entries, where you can just pull up. I guess staff could sort of work out that condition, but we're happy to, to try and make this a more transit-oriented development with car share, bike parking. I guess that's all my comments. Unless you have any more questions.
What's the role of the council?
I'm of approval of the resolution to grant a one-year extension.
Which is 6.1.1.
You got it.
Is there a second? I will second it.
I want to make a comment before we vote on this. I, I want to thank Madison Park for being as responsive in a short period of time as you've been to the signals that you got from council two weeks ago. And in my mind, you've shown a lot of flexing here and a lot, and continued flexibility, not just in the unit, overall unit mix, but some of these other add-on amenities. So I want to publicly thank you for being responsive and for changing. And I feel like you're, we, we can't write all of the past imbalances in one project, but I think you're moving in the right direction now.
Hey, Frankman?
Yes.
Over here.
Is this the resolution, or is this the resolution?
6.1.1.
Approval.
Right, but is it just approving the extension as written or approving the extension with additional conditions of approval?
That was my question.
With the, with the additional comments.
So those were about the.
With the modifications in the design that we've seen, and then with these other things that we've added.
Which were the car share pod, the unbundling of the parking, and the AC Transit.
And work with the Bike Ped Committee to.
Is that part of it?
Yes. Parking, please.
Working with the Bike Ped Committee on the bike parking and working with staff on rearranging the units to be more family-friendly?
That's correct.
All right.
And, and the other thing I want to add there, too, is there's been increase, there's been a rework of the courtyard to be active place space. And, and Frank mentioned that in terms of the kinds of place structures that'll, that would be put in there. And I want that elucidated, and I want the community room spelled out, because the indoor uses for that will also be conducive to group gatherings and other kinds of activities.
We're also happy to bring the community room and the courtyard back to one of these committees, these ad hoc family-friendly committees, maybe one of these committees, or the housing committee.
I think just the fact that you're going to make explicit there's going to be play equipment there that signals to. equipment there that signals to people to expect children's voices.
Can you call the question? Real call.
Councilmember Atkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Asher.
No.
And Mayor Brinkman.
Aye.
Can I make, can I make a comment, which is, I appreciate these changes. This is not the project, if we were starting from the ground right now, it would be a different project.
Yeah.
But I think that these improvements are significant, and I want, I think it's a better project than what you had two weeks ago, and I want to thank you for your openness and your willingness to try some new things and innovation to see how that'll work. So along with the concerns I mentioned earlier, I'm very appreciative of your opportunity to make those changes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I see no policy items, so we are going to move down to administrative items. 8.1, discussion of blight, blighting conditions at 1264 Ocean Ave.
That's me again.
You're up, Charlie.
Hang on a second. Who is that? Have to find my crib sheet. Dang it. Found it here. Now I'm looking for my notes on this. How did I put it? Oh, well. Mayor Brinkman and members of the city council, this was likewise continued from your last meeting. The property owner was not here at that meeting, and we really hadn't done a whole lot of notification about this two weeks ago. So in the interim, as you can see, the property owner is here tonight, and we have mailed copies of the staff report to every resident on Ocean Avenue between Doyle and Vallejo Streets, and so hopefully, they're all now aware of this issue. Oh, I found it. This property has been, has had a blighted condition for many years, as the council knows, sometimes worse, sometimes better, but always kind of an eyesore. In recent days, it seems to have gotten somewhat worse, and we've gotten a couple of complaints from the public about it. So it seemed like the time was ripe to bring it back to you again. As some of you may recall, this property was last before you, about a year and a half ago, in February of 2011, when at that time, the Assistant City Attorney Michael Geena presented you with a report and various options for how to address the situation. At that time, the council voted three to two to pursue further abatement action then. Following that, we sent the property owner a letter asking him to clean up the mess that was on Peabody Lane, and he did that. There wasn't much further action on it until recently, when there was more stuff on the sidewalk in front on Ocean Avenue, and the Public Works Director directed him to remove this stuff from the sidewalk, which I believe has occurred. So the sidewalk is looking better these days, but the property still is not in the best of condition. So there are a number of options, as are outlined in the February 2011 staff report, for how you might proceed with abatement, and I can summarize those if you wish.
Would you please?
All right. Under the Emeryville Municipal Code, there are at least three different provisions that could be pursued. Chapter two of Title 11 is dangerous and unsanitary conditions. And enforcement of this chapter provides that staff would file a written complaint with the city council detailing the alleged violations. The council would then adopt a resolution for a date to hold a public hearing to consider these violations. The council would then adopt a resolution either dismissing the complaint or finding that a violation existed and directing that the conditions be abated by the owner. And if the owner failed to abate the property after receiving the notice, then staff would be authorized to carry out the abatement. Any expenses incurred would be assessed against the property, and the council would hold a separate public hearing to consider whether to impose a lien against the site, and if so, then the lien would be recorded with the county recorder. A second option is weed and refuse abatement, which is in Chapter 10 of Title VI of the Emeryville Municipal Code. In the event of a violation of this provision, the property owner would be provided a notice and opportunity to correct the condition, and if the owner did not take the corrective action, then the city would be authorized to abate the condition and assess the property for the costs. And finally, Chapter 11 of Title VI is property maintenance, which lists a variety of different requirements for maintaining property. In the event of a violation of this provision, staff would notify the owner and provide him or her with an opportunity to correct the conditions if the owner failed to do so. Then the City Planning Commission, acting as the board, the Housing Advisory Board of Appeals, as we previously discussed when we were talking about committees, would conduct a public hearing to consider whether the conditions constituted a code violation and should be abated. If the Board of Appeals found that a violation existed, it would prepare a report of its findings and recommendations regarding the abatement, and that could be appealed to the city council, which would then conduct a separate public hearing to consider the appeal. The decision of the council would be served on the property owner, who would then be provided an opportunity to correct the violations. And in the event of noncompliance, then the city would be authorized to perform the abatement and lien the property for the costs, which again, would be conducted as a separate public hearing and recorded with the county recorder. So those are three options under the municipal code that you could pursue.
Mr. Carpio, would you have anything that you'd like to say on this item?
I am aware of the look of my property. I live there. I have been under lots of stress financially, and this has been for many, many years for different kind of reasons. And lately, one of the reason has been that a dear friend of mine lost her property to scam and bank swindle, and I don't want to go into all these derogatory trip that the financial institution do to take people's property. But I felt sorry because I was the one who initially opened the letter and read to the owner what was going, what was going to happen, what was the institution was trying to get, and they failed to manage to get the property. Because of that, a series of events happened, and I decided, I guess I couldn't do other things to take care of them. They lost the property, and they had a storage in which they couldn't pay, they lost all their items, and so what was not lost, I took it in my property, and in any property, there is just so much you can put, and it overflowed, and I have had a problem on my own with the flooding from the Peabody Lane that I mentioned, you know, from different condition of the Peabody Lane itself that gather and channel the water basically on the upper lot, which drain in my lot. And because of that, it create an emergency situation for me in which everything has to be dropped, but to take care of the flooding in my basement. And this, of course, create condition in which you don't have to put things, you just don't have the time to put things where they belong, and you just lay there and keep it on the fence and pray God that nobody is going to come steal it, regardless of who steals it. So...
So do you have any plans, then, to clean up the property?
Yes, the, what happened is that this weekend, we finally found a storage unit in which we have moved some of the stuff, and moving is takes time, and we are in the process of moving the rest, and so the property is going to look much better the next couple weeks because we move little by little. And in the meantime, I have to explain that because when people just don't have any money or they rely on their retirement check, in which it's maybe very little, I don't know exactly. But she bought a truck to move back east to her old father's house, and the truck broke down, ended up repairing the truck because she couldn't afford it. And after the truck was repaired, then the police came and took the truck. And it cost $900, and these $900 were the money to be, to cross the country, part of the money to pass the country. And now we cannot pass, cross the country because of the weather. So you see, everything from one thing piled up to another, and it was, it was a very upsetting situation when the police came and took the truck, which they claim that the truck was not running, but when we gave the key to the towing company, they drove it out. So, I mean, you know, it was, to me, it was another excuse to take the truck. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on the subject?
I mean, are you really going to start this abatement process all over again? I mean, how many times are you going to clean up this place? I mean, really? You know, I think maybe you need to hire some expert somewhere that can tell you what to do. I mean, you should have a picture of the property in the overhead so that people can see what we're talking about here. But I mean, this has been going on so long, I mean, how many times are you going to find them in violation? Have you ever collected any of the money that's been used to clean this up? I mean, you know, you really got to find another approach. This just isn't working.
Okay, yes, please. You are the one that has the...
Yeah, I apologize for jumping in there.
No problem.
Getting all excited. I had this property for the Peabody Lane, the Maker Better Building, and the 1276 Ocean, which is a parcel we're developing for five townhouses, family housing, which is, I've been basically dragging on it because the environment in that whole block is not conducive for any kids to run around to begin with, and yet they would cost so much money to develop that lane itself and put in five townhouses over there. I approached this gentleman the first day, basically. I said, what does it take for us to come, bring my crew to help you to get things taken care of, at least get out of our property, because he's three, four feet into the Peabody Lane with his fans, and he just bit by bit, bit by bit, he expands your stuff. This has been going on for a long, long time, and this is really a time, something is to happen. If you don't do it, I'll drop my project as well, because I certainly don't, I can't do anything, but I can't even get into my own Peabody. And I'm basically interested to bring it to your attention that this is an opportunity for you to use me as a means to help him, or help you, or help it to resolve it. I mean, I have the means to be positive help. I can help him to clean up, or I can, but he doesn't have a financial or skill or means or desire because he's been doing this for 50 years, and all he can do is accumulate upon what he's got. So he needs help, and I'm willing to help, and, but decision has to come from you at this point. I don't think it's beyond Charlie, or me, or anybody. It's up to you guys to decide what is good for that whole section of town. And then my offer still really truly stands. I'd be willing to offer the city the Peabody Lane, so you can have some legal maneuvering around it, because it's basically a fire lane, it's not used for anything else.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other public comments on this? Hearing none? Well, we have three choices, or we actually have the fourth, not doing anything, so...
Well, I asked to have this put on the agenda once again. Mr. Bukowski is right, this has been going on for 25 years, and I must say, Mr. Carpio has been very clever about sending off the city. We've tried many different strategies, many different ways to clean this property up, taking it to the court. The judge was inclined not to go along with the city, but with Mr. Carpio. But we clearly haven't, you've seen the pictures in your packet, we clearly have a longstanding blight here. I don't, I don't agree with Mr. Bukowski. I know we've done it, we've tried it before, but we have to make another effort to clean up that street. It's not fair to the people who live on that street, it's not fair to the property owners surrounding that. Now, if we need a strategy, we need a airtight legal strategy to move forward, and we have to think about the expense of this. We no longer have redevelopment monies. It's unfortunate that Mr. Carpio held us off during the time we had redevelopment money because there would have been more ability to help him out. That being said, we, I'm looking to the council for support on this. We need to have everybody on board on this, so...
I agree, and I want to second that and just say that something needs to be done, and I don't know what it is, because it has been ineffective over time, but we need to look at a strategy that'll change, change matters and help Mr. Carpio.
What I would like to ask staff is to come back with a proposal and a strategy and a timeline that we would be able to move forward to get this thing cleaned up by June. Michael.
I would just want to add that the, the, sort of the methods that were set forth in that staff report that Michael Geena prepared a year and a half ago, they're really one in the same, those three, you know, it's essentially get access or provide notice to clean up. If you don't, then the city gets access and does an abatement. And we've done, I want to hesitate to say maybe four or five over the years. I believe the first one was done back in 1976. Wow. And, and the city has done those abatements, placed a lien on the property. We don't get repaid in less than until the property is sold. So certainly, that's, that's an avenue, and, you know, any one of those three, obviously, you can utilize that, but as we've seen over the years, an abatement is done, and then the situation presents itself again. We did, previously, we did file an action to have the property declared as a, as a public nuisance. We had a, and part of the, the problem that we had with that is we did not have any, any sort of support from, from neighbors in the, in the community. We couldn't get people to essentially support the city's position, so it seemed before the judge that it was just a big, bad city trying to force its will on a, on a small property owner. So to the extent, and then what also happened was that the judge actually retired from the bench before he issued a ruling. And so then, another judge had to sort of pick it up, and we did not get a, a ruling in our favor. So there's still the ability of the city to, to file a civil action to have the property declared as a public nuisance. If we went down that path, it would certainly make our position more supportable if it were more than just, you know, if there were neighbors who were also be willing to, to support in terms of providing testimony about the impact of the, of the site's condition on their, on their property in the neighborhood. So there is that other alternative. But as you indicated, we can come back at a, at a future meeting, or your next... you indicated, we can come back at a at a future meeting or your next meeting in January with sort of a a strategy as how you might want to address it and timelines.
I agree. I think it's time and Mr. Carpio, you know what what we're talking about here? So you're clear that you have a plan? If you don't have a plan, then we'll have a plan.
Do you want a formal vote on this or just?
No, I want to listen to Mr. Carpio and then we'll have a formal vote.
As I said, I have always asked for if you have money to give away to develop, I'm talking about millions, you could spare for me a couple thousand dollars so I could finish my work. You know, I had the scaffolding and the city came down and took the scaffolding, which was really incredibly stupid, you know? I mean, bird made scaffolding, monkey made scaffolding and you remove my scaffolding, I cannot finish my roof, my stainless steel roof. I mean, you know, or anybody all over the world have a cock laugh about the whole the whole situation. I don't want to insult anybody calling anybody name, you know, but this has to be to make some sense. In 1976, this is true, there were the city came and and took something, but I'm going to explain why. The neighbor blew his engine, you know, and I had a shark in the back, so he put his truck next to the shark and set the shark on fire and claimed that the truck burned down because of the shark. Well, it was somebody else who saw it otherwise, so when I took him to court, he lost. But in the meantime, I had bought a prefab garage that the insurance paid for and the city came and took it off. I wasn't there when it happened. I was overseas. And so that in itself showed that the city was doing something that was not right and I have many stories like that, you see?
Well, that was a prior time, so I'm just making sure that you understand that.
Of course.
We're going to have a vote here pretty soon and the city is going to be doing cleaning up your property if you don't clean it up before. So just want to make sure that's that.
I can do it myself. Just give me the money you owe me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's let's have a vote on this as far as moving ahead with legal actions required to clean up the property at 1264 Ocean.
I'd second that.
Okay.
What do we second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, five oh. Okay, moving on to resolution of the City of Emeryville terminating the July 17, 2012 Community Funding Agreement between the City of Emeryville and Ohana Community Outreach.
So, Mayor, I would like to discuss both eight point two and eight point three together.
Okay.
So as you said, this first resolution is to terminate the funding agreement with Ohana Community Outreach and what we're proposing is to replace it with a new funding agreement with Emeryville Citizens Assistance Program. So to give a little background, in December, the mayor received an email and we had communication with Ohana that Ohana was going to was no longer affiliated with Ecap and that they requested that we terminate future payments under the July Community Funding Agreement. And so that there is a resolution here to do that and there's a termination letter attached to that resolution. Nellie Hannan has formed a new nonprofit called Emeryville Citizens Assistance Program that plans to continue the same services to the homeless that were being provided by Ohana. And so what we're proposing is that we continue funding for those services under a new agreement with Emeryville Citizens Assistance Program. And the amount of money that we're proposing is 25,000 to support food and clothing distribution and that is a continuation of what we had previously, you had previously approved in July for the second half of the year. But we're also allocating an additional 20, $2,731.92 to pay for the property taxes at 3610 San Pablo Avenue, the current facility, because we had overlooked including that assistance before. Now, what we're proposing is that this funding be contingent upon the new Ecap obtaining a lease at the San Pablo Avenue facility. At this time, they do not yet have that lease, but they are in negotiations, active negotiations with the property owner. And we have representatives here. Nellie Hannan is here if you'd like to ask her any questions.
Do you want to come up, Nellie?
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I ask Helen a few questions? On this Ohana thing, has there been any accounting by Ohana of the use of public money that we've already sent to her?
We haven't received any report from her at this point.
Well, just what is the city going to do about this? This is public money.
We can we can follow up on that.
Well, one would hope that we would follow up on that to see if there was proper use of public money. And I guess the next question I have is for Nellie. Nellie, you said you started a new nonprofit and you already have your paperwork back from the state?
Helen has the paperwork that we have.
And so it's it's.
Can you close to the mic, Nellie?
Because we went through this last year where you didn't have the proper work for for Ecap. Do we have those papers now?
That's correct. We do.
We do.
Okay. And can you tell me a little bit, who's on your Board of Directors? Who's helping you out?
My Bobby Miller, Richard Miller, Sonia Stewart and myself.
And these are all family members?
Yes. And we have John Gooding, who is one of our advisors, and some others.
Well, I I think we have to move forward with this, but I think it's important that there is a Board of Directors there that is not just family members. We just went through an ethics training, all of us, I guess, and we want to be sure that even though this is a modest public amount, that we we kind of tie an expanded Board of Directors to this with more community members, business members, things like that. What's everybody else think about that?
No, I agree because I think that was always what we had hoped for in the past and it seemed like some of your committee members kind of went away by the wayside and we, that's when the Ecap kind of went in the, shall we say, the the wrong direction. So I'm concerned too that we need to have some other city, your Board of Directors need to be other people in the city that we know that can help in help you in the financial areas and in the law areas that you're looking for.
Well, we understand that Bobby Miller is a retired captain from the Bergen Police Force. Sonia is, she's well versed in the, in, you know, the bookkeeping and what have you.
Well, I.
Well, can we make it as a, you know, this this grant is conditioned on having a lease, a proper lease with the property owner, but we could we add the condition that by, say, March 1st, you would have a Board of Directors that would include a couple of business people, a couple of community members?
Is that acceptable?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I then, once you plan on coming back, we'll put this down as an agenda item to come back, maybe bring your Board of Directors to meet us.
Sure.
March 1st then. Is there a problem with that?
Well, with that, I would move both resolutions.
I'll second I'll second those. I'll second those resolutions and and I just have a comment. We really want Ecap to succeed. You provide services that are essential, that are more needed than ever before, but we have to have a strong organization. So I'm not exactly sure what kind of technical assistance you'd need, whether that's something that some members of the business community could help with or or city staff could help with. We have to be, from the city's perspective, there has to be some legal distance, I think, but but we really want to, we really want to see you, you know, be solid and and on a good footing while you provide the services. And I know they're very appreciated, you know, they're they're very appreciated. And and I want to appreciate you for hanging in there through hard times and lean times and better times and you've been steadfast and I publicly want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will do everything in our power to follow through with all that.
Well, you you have Bob over here and you have Ken's organization over there. Well, I think, see if they can maybe help send out the news and see how they can, if their members would like to step up to to help you with your cause.
Right, and we will be checking with staff.
Mayor, I have a question for Patrick. Patrick, how do we go about finding out how this Ohana group utilized public money? How do we get an accounting on that?
Well, I believe that there was an investigation that was made by the Police Department about that. I don't know if that's something that we can utilize or if we need to do something different.
Well, we did do an investigation, but we did not do an audit of the spending, just the the statement of Ms. Bass as to the expenditures. We did not sit down and and actually audit the expenditures.
Additionally, the 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 grant agreement between the city and Ohana requires essentially a reporting of of how they've utilized the the funds, so we can certainly try to, you know, enforce the terms of the the agreement with Ohana. That said, given that they are sort of.
I would hope so.
They they may not be as forthcoming as quickly as we would like, but we can approach it from that standpoint. Let's let's make the request.
Let's ask the questions.
Correct. I would also, if we could, just to clarify for the the resolution for item eight point three, I know the staff report made reference that the funding would be contingent on, excuse me, on the actual, you know, executing a lease for the space, but the resolution doesn't reflect that language. So I'd like to to suggest that we add language to the resolution, making it clear that the the funding's contingent on that lease. And then I believe the other item related that you would want to add is related to the composition of the board.
Yes.
Be augmented by March 1st, I believe you said.
Right.
Okay. Would somebody entertain a motion to that effect?
You already have a motion and a second.
And a second.
Well, I mean, with modifications.
With amendments.
With amendments, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Nellie.
Thank you, Nellie.
That's five oh.
Nora?
Eight point four, resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville confirming the appointment of.
Could I just suggest?
Kurt Brinkman.
Kurt Brinkman, the mayor.
Unanimous.
There are a few items where people are still here to weigh in on and and for just to the latest of the hour, maybe eight point eight and maybe eight point 10, point three. I think those are the items, at least that I know, folks might be wanting to hear about. But not, but go ahead and resolve eight point four.
Can we vote on eight point four?
Yes.
I move Kurt Brinkman.
Thank you. I'm thrilled. Thank you.
I'll say aye.
Aye.
Aye, no. Okay, eight point eight. Okay, resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville initiating a general plan amendment to delete the pedestrian path connecting 53rd Street and 47th Street shown in figure three point four in the general plan. And Charlie, you're up.
Yes, it's also shown in figure three point one, which is which is the circulation map. This is what's why I put up here on the overhead. This request came from the school district as a result of the latest iterations of the design of the Center of Community Life. This pedestrian and bicycle path is shown on the general plan here connecting 53rd and 47th Streets and it's on the western property line of the secondary school site between the secondary school and Emery Bay Village. So if we just zoom in here so you can see it a little better, be right there. The present design of ECCL does not include this path and as explained in your staff report, it causes some problems with the existing swimming pool, which is not planned to be replaced. It's planned to be continued in use. The pool deck is somewhat inadequate as it is and construction of this path would reduce further the size of the deck. So at any rate, the school district has asked that this path be removed from the general plan and they've asked you to initiate that general plan amendment.
So I just have one question. What was the science behind putting that line on that drawing? Did you actually, did somebody actually go out and say this path will work at the present condition or?
No, no, this is the general plan. So it's general. It's, you know, it's at a general level, but if I could just, if you want me to explain the rationale for that concept?
Well, I understand, conceptionally, I understand as far as what you're trying to do, but but what I'm saying is, when you, when somebody draws something on the map like that, did anybody actually go out and say this makes sense or or this is would be nice to have if?
Well, I mean, you know, there were a lot of, there was a lot of public input and participation in the general plan process. Every line on this map has not been engineered, but I mean, pretty much every one was discussed at length as to where was a, you know, reasonable place to put a connection. It's part of the concept of trying to break up the larger blocks in the city and create a finer grain.
No, I, that's what I'm saying. I understand the concept, but it's.
Yeah, I mean, when it gets down to the actual implementation of the general plan, then the devil is in the details.
That's what I guess.
That's where we are.
That's all I was asking for.
I move approval of the resolution.
Is there a second? I will second it. Guess we're going to need a real call vote.
Councilmember Atkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
No, although I do understand the practicality of this. I just am sorry to say goodbye to the long public process and the vision of connectivity. So I'm voting no on that.
Vice Mayor Asher.
No, I I want to see the super block broken up.
And Mayor Brinkman.
Aye.
Let me just say for the, I'm sure the council understands this, but just for anybody who may be watching, what you did just now was not to remove this path from the general plan. You initiated a process by which that will then be considered. And that will include a public hearing before the Planning Commission and another public hearing here before the City Council, as well as a referral to the B-PAC. And it will also require an amendment to the pedestrian and bicycle plan. So, you know, you didn't take any kind of final action just now. You initiated that process.
Well, before you leave, let's back up one then. Let's go to eight point seven since you're all geared up there, ready to go. This is the resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville initiating the general plan amendment to delete the pedestrian path connecting 47, 45th Street and 47th Street shown in figure three point four of the general plan and map seven point one of the pedestrian and bike pit pit.
Right. That is this path.
Yes.
Over here. The one you just talked about was right here. This one is the one that is on the eastern property line of Escoila Bilingue and, you know, as I said, this is a general plan. The lines are general. As you know, the actual design of this path that was approved by the Planning Commission and Council has a little jog in it, so it doesn't, it's not a straight line like the general plan shows, but this, again, whoops, again, this is general. So this is a pedestrian path. The one over here behind ECCL is a pedestrian and bicycle path. You can't really tell the difference in the colors in this overhead projection, but this one is one color and this is a different color, which indicates this does not include bicycles, it's just pedestrians. At your, was it your last meeting? At a recent meeting, I think it was your last meeting, you considered the appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of the Escoila Bilingue path. You did uphold the Planning Commission's approval of that design, but at the same time, you also said that it, this path was too problematic and it would be a lot easier for everybody if we just got rid of it. And so you you directed that we bring back this resolution tonight to initiate the general plan amendment and ped bike plan amendment to remove this path from those plans.
Thank you. Any comments?
Yeah, the comment I have on this particular path, the issue here was not necessarily of, you know, the jog in the path or anything. The real issue is being, having that path be safe either day or night. And I think it was a consensus, the reason that we move forward with this is. And I think it was a consensus, the reason that we moved forward with this is, that's a very, it's a difficult area over there in San Pablo Avenue. It is changing, but it's not changing fast enough, and we can't afford to have a police officer standing at that path 24 hours a day. So I would move this resolution. I think it's a wise way to move forward.
Okay.
And I'd like to make another comment about cutting up the blocks, making the blocks easier to walk. You know, we talk a lot about obesity in children and getting them to walk more. What we're really talking about, if we don't have this path in here, is about another eight-minute walk to get from 47th to 45th. So I would move this resolution that we move forward.
Second on it, okay. Do we have a vote? Any other comments? Here we go. Call the question.
Councilmember Atkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Asher.
Aye.
And Mayor Brinkman.
Aye. Okay, it looks like we're at 8.5.
Well, could I recommend, I'm sorry to do this again, but I think someone is here to speak on 8.10.3. This is something that the Transportation Committee had considered, and I just wonder if we could make that earlier for him. Possible.
Thank you for being cognizant of the hour.
I assume you're here to talk about the Pelado property, is that true? Yeah, okay, so I just wanted to bring it forward earlier because it's so late. Yeah, I know, you're not even listening.
Yeah, we're representing the business right next to the building of the city hall. So basically, we're in the process of considering buying a property. Yeah, my name's Pearson, I'm representing Computer Link, which is the business right next to, just next building. So we're in a, considering buying that building in the condition that we have to have a curb cut, because consider what we're doing, so we made it easy for moving the stuffs in and out of our place. So basically, I made it, I just want to, you know, show you the pictures, how it's going to looks like in the street, and if you want to look at it. So it's the picture explained by itself, basically, we made product like, like this for like an internet company, like a data center.
There's a little overhead right there.
Like this.
Wow.
So it's very tall, you can see the perspective, you know, it's like, this would be the finished product, like big.
Don't turn that side out.
Like this. So this is the current, the view of the property. So there's a road up door behind each glass door already. So it's just like, probably like, they improved it, put the facade, the glass facade on it. So basically, what we want is to have something just like this. Basically, just like one opening, remove, remove the glass and make the existing road up door working. So this is, the street looks like, very short street, probably everybody knows that. There's only two side of the building. And then there's, you know, on this side, there's all road up door already, three road up door. So it's not going to be changed the way the whole block.
Sir, how long are the trucks that would be presumably backing into this?
Currently, we have about two delivery in and out a week. We're expanding our business, so I'm hoping we can have two every day at some point. I mean, I'm just joking, but actually, you know, right now is a two a week.
Okay, so how long are the trucks, and would they be blocking the traveling in the street?
Yeah, that would be very temporary, just like we receive like a UPS delivery or FedEx delivery, it would be the same thing. These things are shipped by tracking company, or mostly is FedEx tracking freight service. So, you know, we need to, just need to roll up, roll the crate on the street, and then just with the forklift and everything moving up to the truck.
Mayor Brinkman?
Yes.
At the Transportation Committee member, meeting, they did not intend to back into these spaces.
So they're just gonna roll?
They just need some way to roll the merchandise off of the, out of their storage space, across the sidewalk, down on the street, where it would be loaded onto a truck that is probably double parked in the roadway.
Yeah.
Right now is a no, no curb cut, or if this, anybody, you know, car parking in the front, we have no, even no access to the door. You know, so we can't really buy this building. So basically, we made an offer within the condition that if it's possible to cut, we'll move forward.
Okay.
I'd also like to point out that the costs of changing the curb would be borne by this company if they decided to invest in the property.
To cut it, so we already calculated in the cost of buying the building.
It seems to me that with this double parking, the, I mean, the go-around goes down, goes on the street to the, as I believe, to the Amtrak station now, and so...
No, 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 no.
No?
No, 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 no.
No, no.
Block to the west.
Oh, sorry about that. All right, well, I'm still concerned about any blocking of traffic, of through traffic on that block.
That's, that's why, if you look at this picture, there's not many traffic during, even during the day, because you can't, coming from the other, coming from this direction.
You just can't get there only from one way?
Yeah, it's very quiet, quiet street.
So we collect your sales tax, right?
Oh yeah, you are collecting now for, you know, we're, we're, yeah, we're in business for 20 years, and nine years ago, we moved from Berkeley.
Oh, well, we like you, so I would move that, move that we approve this item.
Second. You did have the recommendation of the Transportation Committee.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Is that yes for everybody?
Yeah.
It passed.
I'd move the entire transportation recommendation.
And I would second that. Everybody approve that? Okay.
Aye.
It all passes. I think we're back to, anything, I guess that's it, 8.5, selection of the Medical Marijuana Committee.
I have some comments as we're constituting this task force. Everybody who submitted an application when they, when they completed it fully, not everybody completed it, their application, showed that they have one, and pretty much the same perspective, and there's no diversity of opinion on, within this, within these applications. And I don't really think that that is a healthy process to have everybody who wants to serve on this, because they already want a particular end product from that. So I have grave reservations about this whole endeavor that everybody wants, else wants to go down.
I share your reservations about the composition of the committee, because what you really have here is an advocacy group.
That's right.
And that's not the intent of our...
No, it's not an advisory committee, it's a lobbying, it's a lobbying, it'll become a lobbying group. But that being said, I would have concerns about Brown and Gabriel, because Brown doesn't live in Emeryville, just an interested advocate. Gabriel didn't even finish the application.
Does he have a last name?
Well, maybe he doesn't use two names, I don't know. But, but those two people in particular, I don't think should serve on this, on this committee. But, but in general, again, it's like, well, if this is really going to be, good effective lobbying is provided when there's, when there's a diversity of opinion and people can really hash things out.
If, if I may, when we looked at the composition as it was set up, it had community members. And I have several police officers that were interested, but they didn't know whether they qualified as community members. When we did set up the fire task force, it specifically had positions for firefighters to advocate that. So we would have had police officer positions, police officers that were interested in serving on this committee, but they didn't feel that they've met the criteria.
I would like to propose that we hold this over, bring it back for a reconsideration of the composition of the committee.
Okay.
Maybe we could just, I think that's a great idea to have police officers serve on it, but also if we could have skeptics, you know, or some designation, someone who, yeah, isn't necessarily...
Nonbelievers of the benefit?
What?
Nonbelievers of the benefit.
I don't know how you designate that. I have a question. If, is the council just holding over the entire item? I'm not quite sure exactly what it is that you're, what action you're taking. Is your, you're asking staff to come back with a proposal for a different composition? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I think one of the questions was whether we could...
Different composition, that's what I'm looking for.
We can't really screen, we can't really screen by perspective necessarily, but I do think it's a great idea to add police officers, and that I would hope that this working group would be healthier by having a divergence of opinion. So I don't think we can, I don't think it's legal to like advertise for skeptics, but, but...
But maybe, you know, a member of the medical profession, or, I don't know, maybe there's some other elements that we haven't tapped.
I think one element that might be important to us is a teacher, someone from the school community. They, we need to hear that voice, what they feel about this kind of an operation in this city.
Or someone who works with young people professionally.
Exactly, exactly.
Teenagers specifically, you mean young people, I don't know what age you mean, but youth perhaps, older youth.
Older young people.
Older young people.
So what we're saying then is that the Emeryville PD is more than walking through town.
Yeah, let's have, what, one or two positions for your officers?
However you wish to.
Well, how many want to serve?
I had at least three officers say that they wish to serve, so two would be fine.
Well, let's do two, let's do two police officers.
But when we worked, when we were working with Almena County on the fire, I mean, they all showed up, the whole fire department.
Oh, you bet.
So I meant, there's no, Ken, you can tell your people to come. But I would like to have, I'd like to have two slots for the Emeryville PD.
Yeah.
Would you like to reduce the number of the community members to three and substitute with two police officers, or add to the committee?
I would, well, I think the more the better. I mean, I'm, I'm just saying that we should probably have two Emeryville PD, and, but I agree with removing...
Good for that addition.
Item number four and number six. And Andre, your arm's gonna fall off, so come out up here and...
I'm laughing.
Are you a skeptic, Andre? Do you want to be on this one?
Well, I was planning to apply for, but then I changed my mind when I heard that the police officer wanted to be in it also. So, you know, so I don't agree with the police getting into something that is debatable as far as the law. The federal say don't, and the state says yes, so, I mean, we have people in between who would have to have, you know, to, I don't want to say to screw, but to go around the, their assignment, you see? And so if I get in it, I don't want any police officer with me.
Oh, Andre, you're not supposed to smoke marijuana while you're at the meeting. Okay, so...
And who was the liaison from the council to that group?
I thought I was.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, oh, good, good.
Skeptic.
All right, all right, there you go.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
Without four and six, are we making the appointments?
Without four and six, and then with, two spots open for the Emeryville PD. Yes.
Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, so we're removing four and six, we're pointing one, two, three, five, seven, nine, and then two Emeryville PDs, and I am the liaison.
So everyone but Gabriel and Brown, but to come back, and amending, so are you amending, since you can't amend it, so it's amending it to include two police officers?
That's correct.
Yes.
And then just to add, to propose that...
They can apply.
They can, yeah.
And I would like to say that, I don't know how we can do this, but if there was another community member who was not necessarily an advocate, but felt that they would like to apply, that we might be open to another application down the line as well.
Well, you know, it's a, it's a public meeting, so...
We've been so flexible about composition.
Especially a task force like this, I think that's important.
Okay.
So it's good to put the word out anyway, that we're open to hearing other views, I think that's important in terms of a process.
And I think Deborah's gonna be up next. This is on 8.9.
But we have to do 8.6.
Oh, I'm sorry, that one snuck in there. 8.6, the calendar. Is anybody having problems with the calendar for next year?
I don't, I just want to say that some cities take an entire month off. I'm just putting that out there. People in Berkeley say, so finally it's August, no meetings all month. I'm like, brrr.
I would agree with that, I think August...
Our staff, I'm concerned about our staff.
Our staff.
I was thinking the same thing, it'd be nice to have the month of August off, but...
Yeah, well, then we may, every time we miss a meeting...
I know.
I know.
The meetings at both ends, either side, are like really long.
I think going, having a month off in August is good.
A new January meeting in there.
Well, as long as we have a quorum, I mean, but... Would that be a problem, Karen, if we take the month of August off and put a meeting someplace?
Do I get to vote on that?
Can you make this, can you make the calendar work?
Make the motion?
Can you guys make the calendar work?
You know, staff gets used to whatever meeting schedule that you set, and I have no doubt that if some emergency came up, as for example, or something unforeseen, like the, I guess, the request to be scheduling something in early January for the city manager search, that, you know, that can always happen if a majority see that that's necessary. So taking off the entire month of August, so not doing July, but instead doing the month of August.
That's correct. So if you had to squeeze an extra meeting in July, I think I would prefer that, but just having the month of August off.
Wait, so the July 4th, around, we would meet then around that?
July 2nd is a Tuesday, and that's the one that's, that's the one that right now is canceled. But, but we would actually have that meeting.
Both of you would prefer meeting in July, that July 2nd?
Yeah, that's fine with me, but...
Yeah, I think I would...
Would you rather have July off and then...
Well, I don't usually travel for that holiday, but I, maybe some people do, I don't really know.
I don't.
Yeah.
Now, we have the fireworks here in town, we can't leave.
We can't leave.
See?
So...
While we're considering this, why doesn't the council consider whether or not, that if the council's not going to be meeting, none of the other committee meetings would be meeting? So that everybody gets a month off.
So the liaisons don't have to come.
Plus the staff, it's the staff work.
Let's everybody think about that.
I love that idea. Can't wait till August.
Civilize.
Okay.
It's like after redevelopment, which is less work to do.
One other question, and that was about the, the Passover is from March 25th to April 2nd.
The April 2nd is not a conflict for me.
Yeah, I was just checking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you checking and highlighting that.
Okay, so now, is it time for Deborah?
For what?
This is the search for the replacement of Patrick O'Keefe.
Yes. Tonight before you is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with a search firm that would be determined by the city council at a future date, and appropriating the amount of $26,000 from general fund reserves to cover these costs. So the recommendation is to help us to fast-track this process. The holidays are adding about two or three weeks to the process, just because of the break and the timing of travel. So our goal was to get the authority to execute a contract to ask you to set a date for interviews with the executive search firms, and also to appropriate $26,000, which is the top end of the search. We would appropriate that into the city council's budget, so it would only be spent on that. It wouldn't be just lumped into another department budget. So if it was, if the cost came in under that, there would be a savings. So it's what we did, is we contacted the major search firms that work with local governments, and there are a handful of them. We got proposals from three.
and there are a handful of them. We got proposals from three. We got a proposal from Avery and Associates, Bob Murray and Associates, Bobby Peckham, Peckham and McKinney, Bobby Peckham. We also contacted management partners. They were unable to meet the schedule, and they're also new in this market, so they didn't feel that they had the experience that you would be looking for, although they are available for lots of other consulting and do a great job. We also contacted Terry Black and Associates, who is also a recruiter in this area, and she's too busy, so she couldn't propose. So the proposals you have before you are from firms that are very well-established, they've been doing this business for a long time. Their prices range, I, I would recommend that you don't necessarily look at price or their exact schedule as your determining factor, that you really meet the people and you feel comfortable with their philosophy and their practice, because they would be working directly with you, the City Council, through this search process, and staff would be assisting in any way that's necessary.
Deborah, I want, I want to thank you for kind of taking the reins and moving this process forward. I, I would hope that part of the selection means that they have a chance to, to chat with us, because we're five individuals who have different perspectives about what we would, what the skill set is and what we're looking for.
Absolutely. Within the proposals, the first step that every single consultant proposes is the meeting with the City Council. That is, it meets your desires, interviews individually with City Council members, a group meeting, of course, with all the members of the City Council to establish a profile or what the criteria are. Consultants have also met your desires of getting input from other members of staff, members of the community. They're willing to set up the outline that you require, and so they can speak to that in the interview process.
I'd recommend that the first Tuesday, well, no, there's a Tuesday, I guess, January 1st is a Tuesday. So, right, so we wouldn't do that then. There was a date that Pat suggested that actually wasn't.
January 9th.
January 9th, Wednesday?
January 9th is a Wednesday, and that seemed to be a day where there were no committee meetings, and all three consultants were available that evening, Wednesday, January 9th. I know January 2nd was proposed, either yesterday or today, and I really only got a response from one of the consultants yet, so.
I'm okay with either the 2nd or the 9th.
So the 9th, I know everyone's available.
Let's, let's do that.
What time?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
If, if, it could be whatever time you're available, but I figured the evening, 5:30, everybody would be available then.
That works for me. Everybody else?
And I, I think we should televise it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
That was a question we had of whether you wanted it televised. So it will be kind of a more formal situation, because they'll be up here at the mic, but I think they're very used to presenting to councils. That won't be a problem for them. The other question and suggestion we were gonna bring to you, which I haven't had a chance to check in with the consultants, but in order to move this forward more quickly, I was going to propose to them and to you that maybe we do 30-minute interviews with each, and then you discuss and make a selection right away. Ask all the consultants to stay until you've made your final determination, and then have your first criteria meeting that evening. So that would stretch out the meeting probably until, I don't know, eight or, eight or nine o'clock at the latest, but you would have an hour and a half of interviews, maybe another 20 minutes of discussion to make your selection, and then you could go ahead and meet with the person selected. Now, they wouldn't have entered into a contract with us yet, so I do need to check with them and make sure that there's no issue with that. But that was something we wanted to propose and get your feedback on, whether you'd be interested in moving that quickly.
I like that idea.
I think I still have, I like that idea too, and I think I still can find the questions that we used the last time round, if that would be helpful to you.
To interview? Sure, that would be great.
Okay.
Is there any element of that evening that would be closed session in terms of our opportunity to talk, or is it all public and open session?
The consultant would still be able to interview each of you individually, but this would be an open, if you want to televise, this would be a public, open meeting.
But our deliberations too are public, not closed, I assume. I'm just asking.
Deliberations to select the.
Yes.
Come on up, Andre.
Thank you.
Say that again, Michael.
The deliberations to select the consultant are an open session item.
Open, okay.
Not consulting, not the personnel decisions, but the consultant, you're saying, right?
Correct.
And, and I just want to clarify one other thing, which is that, you know, our hope was at this point to be considering a consultant to help us with our evaluation process, and that this could be wrapped into the work that this consultant does for us.
Absolutely.
I think the work that this consultant does will absolutely be useful in that process.
Good.
I think I have a good idea. Whoever's chosen has to pay for, from his salary, the day they hire. $26,000 is really lots of money. I don't like it, you know, it's just whoever's chosen pays on their fair, and all that. When I apply for a job, nobody pays me, you know, I mean, a teacher goes, apply for a job, he doesn't, he doesn't get paid to go to the interview. I went to dozens of it. I have to pay everything, take day off and all that. So, I mean, why make a difference? That's no good.
Okay, I think that's everything down to the city as the housing successor. Unless I miss anything?
Yeah, we need approval of that resolution first.
Move second.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, so we're on the city as housing successor. So earlier this evening, I provided each member of the council a last-minute staff report. I've also provided to staff and city clerk, as well as put it in the agenda packets outside. And essentially, on the, the 12th of December, the agenda for, for this meeting of the council was posted. So thereafter, on Saturday, December 15th, successor agency staff received the letter of determination from the State Department of Finance regarding the due diligence review of the Low and Moderate Income Housing Fund. The results of the, the due diligence and review for the low mod fund essentially required the city as the housing successor to refund 1.5 million to the successor agencies, successor agencies, Low Mod Income Housing Fund. This sum relates to the down payment that the former redevelopment agency made relative to the acquisition of 5890 and 5900 Christie Avenue for development affordable housing. This asset has been transferred to the, by the successor agency to the city as the housing successor, as a housing asset, with the approval of the Oversight Board and the Department of Finance. The city as the housing successor does not currently have this 1.5 million available to repay this amount, and the successor agency is required to make the payment that's set forth in the due diligence review by this Friday, December 21st. Otherwise, the ability to retain the finding of completion from the DOF, Department of Finance, will be jeopardized. And if the successor agency does not obtain this finding of completion, then the successor agency's ability to utilize the pre-2011 excess bond proceeds for purposes consistent with the bond covenants, as well as ability to retain real property assets for governmental use and future redevelopment purposes are jeopardized. So, under provisions of the Brown Act, Government Code, Section 5495, 4.2, Subsection B, Subsection 2, the City Council may take action on a proposed resolution to provide an inter-fund loan from the city's general fund to the city's housing asset fund upon a determination by two-thirds vote of the council, so that's four of the members here tonight, that there is a need to take immediate action, and that the need for action came to the attention of the city subsequent to the posting of the December 18th, this evening's agenda. So at this point, staff's recommending that the council make and pass a motion by two-thirds vote that there is a need to take immediate action on the proposed resolution, and that the need for action came to the attention of the city subsequent to the posting of the December 18th, 2012 agenda. With that motion, the, the council can then consider the item, and then I'll get into the substance of what.
Move to consider the urgency item.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, got it.
So staff is also recommending the council adopt the attached resolution, which would provide for an inter-fund loan. On September 28th, the successor agency completed the due diligence review, it's a low mod fund, and transmitted to the Oversight Board. On October 2nd, the Oversight Board convened the public comment session on the low mod due diligence review, and on October 10th, they approved the due diligence reviewed, which was then transmitted to the, to the State Department of Finance, State Controller, and the Alameda County Auditor Controller. The due diligence review approved by the Oversight Board indicated that the total amount available to be distributed to the taxing entities was $608,309. On November 9th, the Department of Finance notified staff that it, it had completed its review of the low mod due diligence review, and was adjusting the amount available to be distributed to taxing entities from $608,000 to $7,693,831. A copy of the Department of Finance letter is enclosed as an attachment. Thereafter, on the 16th of November, staff submitted a request to meet and confer. On December 3rd, myself and Deborah Acker met with the Department of Finance staff in Sacramento to discuss our objections to their review. On Saturday, this past Saturday, December 15th, we received their revisions, and they've adjusted the amount downward from 7.6 million down to 2,725,729. The two areas of difference between the low mod due diligence review approved by the Oversight Board and as finally adjusted by the Department of Finance that relate to two items. One is the 1.5 million down payment expended by the former redevelopment agency for the Christie Avenue parcels, and two, roughly $617,000 that were retained for future payments that, on enforceable obligations that really aren't currently due at the current time, but will be in the future. And so Department of Finance's position is, is well, you can ask for that money that you need in a subsequent ROPS period. So, as council's aware, the Department of Finance has taken the position that the acquisition of 5890 and 5900 Christie and the various obligations associated with the future debt payments are not enforceable obligation. This obligation was denied on ROPS 1, and then again on ROPS 3. We did request to meet and confer on ROPS 3, as we indicated during the council meeting. We just got a letter from the Department of Finance with their determination on ROPS 3. I can give that to you right now.
You received it since earlier this evening? Is that what you said?
I think during one of the items we were talking about.
Yeah.
Yes.
Really? Oh, how convenient, that we have a late meeting this evening.
Hot off the press. Date it today.
Actually, I gave away my own.
Yeah, you don't have a copy.
Essentially, the, their response on the, our objections to ROPS 3 is, is essentially that they are continuing to deny the items that they had objected to initially. And I'll just also point out, I know the council was interested in the, the item regarding the utilization of the, the bond proceeds. They've continued to take the position that those are denied. They do state that the items are not eligible for bond funding at this time. However, successor agencies will be eligible to expend bonds issued prior to January 1, 2011, once a finding of completion is received. Finance encourages the agency to place these obligations on subsequent ROPS for approval, so that's their position. Now, back to the item before you. The, so with their denial of the acquisition of the Christie Avenue parcels, it's not surprising that in their review of the low mod housing fund that they looked back at the down payment and found that that should be disallowed as well. So in order to comply with the Department of Finance's determination that 2.7 million of the low mod housing fund be returned to the taxing entities, the city as a housing successor, which is the owner of this Christie Avenue parcels, they need to refund the low mod housing fund the sum of 1.5 million that was utilized for the down payment. And then once this amount is refunded to the fund, the successor agency can then make the, will have sufficient funds to make the payment of 2.7 million to the Alameda County Auditor Controller, who will then distribute the monies to the taxing entities. And that payment, as I say, of the 2.7 million is required by this Friday. You should also note that the city, as one of the taxing entities, will actually receive back roughly 22% of the 2.7 million, so the city will get back roughly about $600,000 from, from that. In order for the city as the housing successor to make this payment, it's recommended that the council authorize an inter-fund loan in the amount of 1.5 million from the general fund to the housing assets fund. The payment to refund the down payment of 1.5 million would then be managed, as I said, from the housing assets fund. The loan from the general fund to the housing assets fund would not bear any interest, and we repaid from the city's eventual receipt of the CRAF monies of about 9.6 million. That is an enforceable obligation and is a housing asset, and that has consistently been approved on ROPS 1, 2, and 3. So with that, I should also just remind you, this was a similar process we utilized for back in October of this year, where we authorized funds for the payment of the first payment due on the, the notes for this property. Again, we can expect to see repayment of the CRAF obligation in the 20, I believe it's the 2012, 2013 fiscal year. And, but it will come in based on a formula that we don't know all of the, the equation to that at this point in time, so we don't know exactly how much will come back in that initial time period. We also indicated that previously, and will likewise repeat it here, that we're intent is to seek proposals for redevelopment of these parcels. We also have an additional parcel adjacent to it, 6150, that would also be comprised of that, that RFP that we eventually issue, which obviously this, the council will have to approve. So at this point, again, we're recommending the inter-fund loan.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Can I ask why we're loaning it from the general fund and not from our reserves in this case?
I think it's, the general fund reserves is what I was.
It is from the general.
It is from reserves?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I thought it said just from the general fund. I didn't understand it was reserves.
I believe Fund 101 is the, it's the same account, if I'm not mistaken.
The general fund does contain reserves. It's not the Economic Uncertainty Fund. It is the general fund reserves, which we will be coming back to you with the savings from the last year's audit. And so we've spoken about that, but there are, there's enough reserves in the general fund to fund this 1.5 million.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't see the word reserves in there, and that's why I was asking. Thank you.
Mr. Bill, so using the, the CRAF payments in this way, I mean, when, so when do we get that first payment? We'll already have our finding of completion at that point? We'll already have our finding of completion at that point?
More than, yes.
Will?
Let me, let me reread what I've written here, and I'll...
I'm trying to...
Yeah, so the, if you look on page 4 of 6 of my report, near the bottom, it says repayment, also, the CRF obligation has been listed on ROPS 1, 2, and 3. Then it goes on, and it talks about repayment of the CRF obligation has priority over any other loan repayment, yet repayment of the CRF cannot commence until the 2013, 14 fiscal year.
Okay.
So that's, we're looking at ROPS 6, I believe, is that?
But we'll already have our finding of completion, well, by that point. Okay.
Okay. Department heads. Oh, we need a vote. I'm sorry.
So we have a motion and second already?
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let me go back here. Okay, communications report, department heads.
The Planning Commission had their December meeting last Thursday, December 13th. I would note that we had three excused absences. Commissioner Donaldson, Commissioner Steinberg, and Commissioner Tan were absent, so we barely had a quorum of four commissioners, but we were able to carry on. However, Commissioner Moss did need to recuse on the city's storage extension item because he lives across the street, and therefore, we did not have a quorum for that item, so that had to be continued to their next meeting on January 24th. But on the other items, complete streets policy, they did approve that. This is a requirement of ABAG and the Alameda County Transportation Commission for the One Bay Area Grant Program, and that will be coming to you at your next meeting for, hopefully for your approval. It has to be approved, it has to be adopted by the end of January, so it'll be coming to you on January 15th. As I said, city storage was continued. They approved the Pixar warehouse in the Level 3 building at 5,000 Hollis Street. That, I believe, was a unanimous approval of the four of them who were there. That decision is appealable to the city council within 15 days, for which the appeal deadline is next Friday, December 28th, and if the council wishes to appeal this to yourselves, this would be the time to do that.
Got it.
And then, the ne, the new planning regulations were approved with a few amendments requested by Wareham Development, and those will likewise be coming to you for first reading of that ordinance on January 15th. So, that's my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Helen, do you have anything?
I have a report.
Okay.
You have a letter before you in support of ABY 39 Skinner.
Could you speak into your mic?
Sorry.
It's hard to hear you.
It's right here. Essentially, this is the implementation of Proposition 39, which takes 550 million annually through additional tax, corporate income taxes, and distributes it to Clean Energy Job Creating Fund. And Assemblymember Skinner has put together a proposal for using that money in many ways that could benefit our city, both in schools, as well as energy reduction projects. So we're asking that you authorize the mayor to sign this letter.
Move approval.
Second.
Second, okay. Here it is, it's signed. Anything else, Helen? Nothing else? Council members? Oh, yes.
Yes, there had been a question earlier on the process for public notification around the potential of the city council deciding to move to even-year elections. So, I'm sorry if there was some miscommunication, but staff's intention was that yesterday, for example, I was asked to make a presentation at the Emory Unified School District Board Meeting, and so we had wanted to be able to bring that discussion to council, which I can give you a short summary today, but they, I think, felt that while they had some of the concerns that were expressed by some of the people on this board, that it seemed that really the whole county is moving in that direction, and so that it probably made sense to go ahead. They do have a little bit of, more of a wrinkle, and that unlike the city, they would have to pass a resolution and transmit that to the county by March, early March. They have a 240-day before the, they have to tell the county 240 days in advance that they're going to cancel election, essentially, they're going to move to even-year. We do not have that same requirement, but they do. So, that's, I won't say a concern, but they would have to move fairly quickly if they wish to continue consolidate with us. What we were planning on doing is coming back January 15th with a written report that just kind of updated the council, as well as the public, about the outcome of that meeting. We would also be giving a timeline of what the, the city steps would be, which is a first reading, followed by a second reading of an ordinance. Staff would be proposing that the first reading be on February 5th, with the second reading on February 19th, and that in mid-January, that, that the city council, the city would distribute a citywide postcard to all residents regarding the fact that the council is going to consider a first reading of an ordinance on February 5th, and we would have a copy of that draft postcard as part of your January 15th packet. If on Jan, you know, if the council decides to go forward with the even-year election, then obviously, we'd be doing, you know, more, even more notification about the change after the fact. In addition to the postcard in January, it also gives us two opportunities to put something in the e-news, as well as on, on the city's website. So, the February 5th date provides, I think, a lot of opportunities in January to get the word out to your constituents. So if they have any concerns, they could, we would do something for the January 9th, for example, just telling people about the report coming on January 15th, and then between January 15th and February 4th, that would be when the postcard would be sent citywide.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports? Council members?
You know, I... I have one, no, go ahead.
After you. No, I have a lot, so.
Okay.
Fifteen, 20 minutes at least.
I just have a couple of things. First of all, the, the rec center is up and running in the new portables, and it just looks wonderful over there. You, I encourage everyone to go walk through, if you're there, any time between 4:00 and 6:00, you get an idea of how many children we're serving in Emeryville, and it's really wonderful. They have dedicated spaces for computers, for an art room, and it is just a buzz with activity, and I think that the kids are obviously happy about it. They've set up a waiting room in the front where parents can talk with each other while, while they wait for the kids to come up, and I, I just think that it, it looks like we, we care about kids. It's just wonderful. And the other thing I wanted to report on is that there was a breakfast with Santa on, on Saturday, and they held it at ECDC, and that was also well-attended. I would say there was probably 25 families there.
That's very good. Okay, I have a couple. Are you all done?
Yeah, I have one too, when you're done.
After you.
So, the Transportation Committee had a special meeting last Tuesday in the morning. It was actually at the Fire House on Hollis. It was very well-attended. I would say there were 30 people there, a lot of people with a lot of very legitimate concerns about the implementation of parking changes and plans in Emeryville. But we were promised also by staff that this would be, come to council on January 15, the same meeting, sounds like a doozy already. The Transportation Committee, me and Nora, agreed to recommend to council that we consider the first steps of this plan, what's so, I think, important about this plan is that there's monitoring that's built in to the plan, but there's a lot of nuanced conversation about this. It's not an obvious, easy, black-and-white decision, as all of our decisions are, I'm sure. And in fact, Ken Bukowski has, is organizing, as I understand it, for the Emeryville Property Owners Association, a community meeting on that Saturday just before, which I think is January 12, to have an open community meeting at 10:00 a.m., inviting people, and he's planning, I think, to distribute widely information about that. He is not in support of us moving forward on this, so, but he has invited me to speak for 10 minutes at that meeting, so I'm...
Where's the meeting going to be?
Well, it's not, it's not been nailed down yet. He's...
It was Ralph Hawley.
It's supposed to be at Ralph Hawley, but I think he's still working with the city on renting the facility, so, or the school district, rather. So until that's confirmed, I guess, I'm not sure that we should say that's where it is, but I'm looking forward to a very robust conversation around this. And I've learned a lot in the last few months just about this, and so I'm, I'm very excited to engage the community and have real conversations, deep conversations, not only about our streets right in front of our houses and where we work, but also actually what this means in the broader perspective in terms of climate change and the climate plan that we already have in place in our town, so just wanted to let you know.
Anything else?
No.
I'd like to say that Emeryville is still the incubator of, of small business. Seven of the first 25 fastest-growing private companies in the East Bay are in Emeryville. Nest Collective, Tube Mogul, Webmaster, I'm sorry, Web Marketing, 1, 2, 3, Alta Vista Solutions, SFS Chemical Safety, Location Labs, and League Qual are all based in Emeryville. It's, it's really quite the honor. The other thing I'd like to do is I'd like to thank our police department for the flyer that I see around town about the little things that you should do, which when you're out shopping, and I have to tell people, help our police department, do not leave bags or anything in your car.
Yeah.
And when you're walking with your cell phone, make sure that you see who's around you when you're walking, because we have too many foolish little crimes like that in town. The other thing is Melinda Chen is going to be retiring, and she left early tonight, so we weren't able to say anything, you know, as far as thanking her for her years of service here, but thank you, Melinda. And the other things, I've been attending a lot of meetings. The Senior Center had a great Christmas party. The Alameda County Fire Department had another great Christmas party. The Alameda Mayor's Conference had another great Christmas party, didn't it, Pat? And then we had a, a party here for the new piece of art that we have right down the hallway, so please look at it. It, it kind of grows on most of us up here on the council. Some people to my left might have a problem with it, but Carl, we appreciate your art. And that's the end of this meeting, and now we have one more meeting.
Yep.
We have, and we're going to get done with this right by 11 o'clock. Community...
Excuse me.
Okay. I'm trying to stay awake. I just have to move. And Pat said we're going to be out here by 9:30. Are you ready?
Yeah.
We are now Community Development Commission of Emeryville Regular Meeting, December 18th. We're all here. We said the pledge. Public comments.
Move the calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
No public hearings, no policy items.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second. Thank you.
Good God.
All right. That was the fastest meeting.
You're the bomb.